Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is. Due to the fact that I thought this was something wrong here, I tried to go in and look at our seventh meeting. On YouTube, and I didn't, it wasn't there.
Yeah, it seems to me they're not posting a lot of meetings on YouTube.
So they had technical difficulties with that particular meeting and that meeting is not going to be posted. I confirmed that with the cable folks. They had trouble with that particular one.
Anyways, because when I was listening to him, I, I was under the impression when I was, I could have sworn that Leah had said yay or yes. May I ask, why is it A and A and not yes or no?
That's, that's what they recommend that you use as the state. That's what they recommend as verbiage, but.
Tom, they're wrong because some people, their verbiage is a little out or in.
You mean, you mean New England accent?
Could be, in New England, but I'm just saying that's my opinion and I just want to put it out there, please. Other than that, that's it.
So I will say that the select board approved the minutes, these particular minutes last night, um, with the votes as documented. There was no question about the votes and they did approve them.
Okay. Alright.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
abstain.
Uh, minutes of July eighth.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second there.
Any discussion?
Yeah, real red, red.
No.
Well.
No, just to check mark that it's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, uh, I mean Bryce Lemon. Engineering reports on phase three A. Asbill plans. He has reviewed them and they have no comment.
They're gonna fix all these and.
Yeah, this is a little kind of a, I guess, a little interesting.
Excuse me, what you, what did you say about the, seen, oh, seen it, oh Bryce Lemon rather, excuse me Bryce Lemon? About the Quinn engineering?
Yeah.
Any comments on that? Yes?
The, well, the Asbill plans, he had no comment.
So Kevin was okay with what's there?
Number five, uh, fifteen, excuse me, streetlights plan, call for streetlights, no streetlights installed, this requirement may have been waived.
It was waived.
It was waived.
Yeah, it was.
So I would strike may and put has been.
These are not minutes.
I don't want anybody to go back and say it's screwed up.
Okay, so we should make a.
You can either have Kevin make a new one up, I don't care, just I don't want a loophole that a lawyer can take a look at and say, hey.
Put in streetlights.
Well.
I'm fine with that.
We cannot modify his report.
We can suggest to him that he.
Can suggest.
Yep.
He make a correction to it.
Yeah. Make a suggestion that he should have come before us and, and before.
We get, sort of, here.
I'm just, I'm just saying that I don't.
Anyway, uh, there's obviously a number of, uh.
Open items still?
Open items that he is going to have to take care of. Uh, I guess just kind of an interesting thing, maybe. Back when Kyle Holgren, uh, was doing mostly inspections and that sort of thing. Uh, when he wrote up a report, he would automatically copy Blair on, on his reports. Okay, um. Josh Chabado, when he was here, uh, he decided that, that really probably wouldn't be the best idea. Because he wanted to have, he wanted to have all these documents in his hand, like, and his deadline was like the Thursday before planning board meeting. For him to review before it went to both us and to, uh, Mr. Blair. Uh, I talked with Kevin Quinn about this because once Kevin took over, he stopped copying Lee, Clea with, uh, with these things. And again, he felt that it really is something that the board should see before Mr. Blair does.
Okay, I agree.
And I had no problem with that. And as a matter of fact, uh, Clea called me today. And was wondering, hey, where are those reports, blah, 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 and so forth, and, uh. Uh, I told him, yes, we'll view them at this meeting tonight and we'll have them tomorrow.
Honestly, I say, do we need a motion to send them to him or is it just, it's administrative?
I don't, I don't.
I think it's administrative myself.
So, anyway, that's for all of these anyway.
For all of them?
So obviously, obviously a number of items on Bryce Lemon.
Since Ron Bryce Lemon, Delia read the email, here for this.
Right, which my understanding is it's separate from this.
Okay.
Ho- um, however, I did send it to the board because I thought it was appropriate that you weren't brought in.
Yeah. It's, um, the whole hullabaloo with that crossing, with the D, DCR, DEP.
Okay.
Initially, it was sent in last year and they were like, it's different, you didn't ask us. And so that's what started the storm if I, if I read through that email chain, correct? And then it just, they, they weren't happy, but from my perspective, when I looked at the drawings. That design changed in April of twenty twenty four.
Wait, which, which email are you talking about? Cause I think we've had two different emails on Bryce Lemon this, today.
Okay, the one I was talking about was the one Clea about the crossing.
Okay, so, yes, my understanding was that the board had never received a copy of the plans. So that's why we reached out, that's why I reached, I reached out to him for a copy.
And he has since emailed, I believe he copied, uh, you with a copy of that plan and he is going to provide a full-size plan. Uh, within the day or so, soon as he can get it printed out.
Okay, of course, I was gonna go one step further. Have we got any update from the DCR, DEP on status of where it is?
We don't normally get that.
Well, the subdivision's in a holding pattern until we, till it gets released, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm, me personally, is I'm struggling because that's the tie-in between the two.
Yeah, that is correct. So that's one of the things we wanted done so that.
This year.
Yeah, so the bus and people can.
So that was my only, that was the only reason Norm I was asking if we had any updates is that.
I'm not aware, but.
DCR does not report to us.
No, but as a courtesy, if they're gonna release a works, I, what do they call that? Um. I call it work stoppage, but it isn't, it's basically a.
Seasoned assist.
Yeah.
I suppose we can request it.
I, I just like an update so we know.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
If, if I may, um, it's still going through the legal process right now, um, Attorney Kerizzi, uh, Clea's attorney had requested, uh, continuance on the hearing. Um, that was granted by the DEP, so they still have not had the hearing. He's also, uh, going, currently going through the process with the Conservation Commission to amend the wetlands permit. Um, which also has to be done in tandem with the DCR and DEP to make sure that everybody is on the same page. So as of right now, the hearing was opened at our last ConCon meeting and was continued to our meeting on August fifth.
We're not gonna get this done before winter?
I don't think so. That's an awful lot down there.
Alright, should we, be, since that's a major change to the design, should we have a discussion about that? I know not tonight, it's not on the agenda, but should we put that on the agenda for down the road since they made a major, that's a major change to the design? I don't know, I'm asking the board, I'm not saying, I'm just asking the board, should we?
Not knowing how it's going to be laid out, yeah, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
We need, we need to be updated. Because.
Absolutely, we need to be kept informed of what's going on over there, especially with all the mishaps that have happened, all the missteps, if you will.
What there is, we request these, uh, DCR.
I, I, I guess I, do you, I guess.
How do we stay in the loop? Yeah, how do we stay in loop? Is that, do you have a contact with DCR? Or do we, or maybe the ConCon?
I can keep you in the loop via the Conservation Commission.
Alright, I guess I'll let you too.
Yeah, Delia and I communicate every day, so.
Yeah, cause I just wanna know, you know, if they're gonna, if they're gonna approve it and move on, but if George has asked for a continuance, he's got something else he's working on, so. We'll worry about that when it comes. The other portion is from the planning board standpoint. Do we wanna have a dis, cause I think we just get an updated plan with that new crossing on it?
But it hasn't been accepted.
Hasn't been accepted by us, so do we need to put that before the board and run it? Because it's different than what we, than the subdivision that we approved. I guess, I, I, that's why I'm asking if it's minor or major, I don't know.
I know, and I don't know either, it probably just. If the position of the roadway is adjusted significantly. Yeah, it probably would be, although I think if I remember right, uh, back on, uh. The phase three. Uh, he made a revision to the roadway.
Oh, cause of the.
Yeah, because of the top, topography or whatever it was, and I think we consider that a minor change.
Correct.
So, uh, it's up to us to call whether it's a major or minor.
Okay.
I would say we should err on the side of caution with that one, I mean, with, with everything that's going on, I'd rather us actually be able to take a look at it. Um, than have it go past us without doing some investigating.
So.
Do we, he's gonna get you a new plan, correct, with everything on it? Is that what?
So my understanding is that the copy, I think it was forward to everybody, uh, that's the updated plan. Now, the status of that, I understand he's applying for permit. Um.
It's like starting from scratch, almost. So it's gotta get through DCR and this.
Maybe forward, forward this to Kevin?
I was gonna stay, I was thinking that, Dor, ask Kevin, could you give us, cause if it's going, if it's going through ConCon again for appro, is for a new approval?
Yeah, it's going through for an amendment, but I just have a quick question, is this portion of roadside, uh, woodside included in the street acceptance request for this fall?
No.
No, 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 no. This, this would just be a part of the, the last part of his phase, but from Seth and Nick's perspective, it was really needed because he's got, they've got two dead ends right now. And this was the one that was gonna tie it together and they wanted it done this year, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
Kevin should certainly be able to tell whether there's any significant road changes and that sort of thing. So we'll forward that to Kevin with it.
Good, and ask him to give us an opinion, yeah. Excellent, I'm good with that.
Phase three, you, you, um.
And I could ask Delia, I missed the second email, what was the second email about?
Um, it's unrelated to this, it was a complaint that he was.
Oh, was that the water one?
Right.
Okay, sorry, I won't, that's a different issue.
Yeah. Okay, any comments on, on the phase three?
B?
B.
Is it B? Or is it A?
Which one? Phase three A, you mean?
Three, yeah, his three A here.
Yeah.
And his B here, so I wanted to know.
We're still on A.
You're still on A?
Yeah.
Alright. What else?
Okay.
What's left in my book?
Does this include the sidewalk in front of the catch base? I'm not, I'm not good with the station numbers, so. Um, is it Woods, well, Woodside?
Woodside.
Yeah, I believe he's putting in sidewalks, I was just gonna say is.
Yeah, I guess once again, I think wondering if we need to send a reminder back on phase two. I believe, I haven't been down there lately, but I believe there's a section of sidewalk missing right in front of the detention pond.
Yep, but he said he wasn't gonna get that finished until he had his.
Yeah, but it's all finished.
Exactly, that's my point, well, now it's time to do the complete closeout.
The detention pond, is that for what is, is happening with phase four?
Oh, you mean the crossover between the two?
Yeah, I'm ju, I'm just wondering if.
I would imagine that crossing and whatever is gonna contribute to that detention pond.
Yeah. But he would be tying into the existing.
Piping.
Piping, he wouldn't have to do any more changes.
No, and I know he's cleaned it all out, uh, the, the sides of it are all seeded.
Yeah.
And so forth at this point.
It's just one of those things that, uh. So what, what, what could happen between now and?
Sending this report to him for three A, basically, the two reports are the July first. Should we also include that since it's on Woodside, a reminder to finish out?
Yeah.
The sidewalk in front of the detention pond?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Send this to him and with a comment, uh, I can clarify that with you.
Yeah, perfect, so that I'll know exactly the location, cause it's separate from what's in the report, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on three A? Then we also have three B. Uh, again, the Asbill plans, he had no comment on. And three B.
Page one, I had a comment on number one, station zero zero. Rutland Planning Board may wish to waive this requirement.
I'm not in, I'm not in the, did, did we ever waive stop signs and stop lines? I, I don't think so. I, I'm saying that's a negative.
Where would he get that information from?
I don't know, cause we haven't done it, we've never waved stop signs and.
I mean, we probably need to track the decision first, just to make sure.
Well, it says may wish to waive this requirement, which means.
He didn't, he doesn't see a waiver.
Yeah, he doesn't see a waiver.
Oh, okay.
That's the reason why I'm on like, I, I don't remember in all the years ever waving stop signs.
No.
No.
If it's helpful, I don't know if this is helpful, um, the select board has actually received street sign requests for some of his other subdivisions where, uh, stop signs don't exist. And they had requested to have stop signs and the recommendation, um, was not to put them in because they were not a part of the subdivision decision.
Ah.
Yeah, specifically up in like the Vista, um, neighborhood.
I just, I have a problem at a.
Going forward, yeah.
Stop like this, not putting a stop sign there because you, you're asking for an accident. And if it's a town road, then we gotta worry about it, if it's a private road, I don't really care, it's private, it's their call.
Yeah.
But with a town road. I guess, is this something we should have Nick weigh in on?
Probably, but. Um. I'm just trying to keep straight in my mind, because we do not require stop signs within subdivision.
Okay.
So in other words, you know, where each cul-de-sac goes off, that sort of thing, we don't require a stop sign, those.
We require it at the exit of the subdivision and that's it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe that's something we need to look into.
You know, maybe, uh.
I'd, I'd ask Nick just to see what his thoughts are, he might think it's excessive if you have a stop sign at every.
I almost think I recall him commenting on just that.
Yeah, it's, it's only, it's first thing comes to mind, we have so many cul-de-sacs, so you'd have stop signs all the way through subdivisions.
Not that they'd be four-way stops, but maybe one, one street would.
Well, you, you basically, the T that came in, the T portion would be the stop, the other one would be the through.
Yeah, but, um, uh.
Definitely a legal issue if everyone's gonna.
I, I think we should just send an email to Nick and ask him about questions for.
Sorry, who's Nick?
Oh, Nick Monaco, the chief police.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I, uh, used, used to talking in, uh.
Yeah.
Pieces and Paul, so Nick Monaco's the police chief and I just send a email to him, asking him his opinion. On three, putting a stop sign at a three-way, um. That's what I'm looking for, three-way intersection in a subdivision? That's all I'd, I'd probably do.
It seems to me I, I recall him saying that he wasn't in the paper.
And, and Dorm, I think the reason you said and I said is it, cause there'll be stop signs everywhere in these sub-subdivisions, which.
Yeah, we'll start looking like Pittsburgh.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure they won't.
Stand straight.
Ever driven in Pittsburgh.
Plow and stuff.
So someone, someone must have a contract with the state for stop signs. They have stop signs in the middle of the street with no intersection.
Oh, yeah.
Anyhow, okay, that's it.
Alright.
So there's aprons missing, so he's gotta install these aprons, I see, eight.
This is kind of interesting, granite inlet headers. Been in with the first coat of paving.
Yeah. Well, some of that road had to be repaved, if I remember right, cause at the end of it, it was collapsing. If I remember correct.
It seems to me, I think when they were plowing, they peeled off some of it too.
Yeah. Well, I'm fine.
Up Pioneer Circle?
Hmm, I thought it was up on Pioneer Circle.
Oh, yeah.
Cause Pioneer's the one that goes up the hill.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Am I wrong?
The one right before the bridge?
Yeah, it's, this is the one, it's right at the, just, just a little after the entrance from Sharnak Hill on the right.
Oh, that's, I, I was thinking it was the, uh.
I thought Pioneer Circle was up at the top.
I don't think so, I, well, let's put it this way.
This is the one off Woodside, but, um.
A- actually, this should be Lindsey Way at this point, that's the one he changed the name, it used to be Lemon Circle.
Right, we have a, we have a map.
And.
No, we don't.
I got a hunch Kevin may have incorrectly labeled this.
Okay.
See that's Lemon Circle.
No, he submitted for Pioneer, street acceptance for Pioneer Circle at the same time that he did Woodside and Arrowhead Way. Lindsey Lane subsequently came in like three, three weeks ago or so.
This is Lindsey Lane.
Pioneer is on the main street side.
Pioneer Circle is Lindsey Lane.
Lindsey's on the turnpike side.
And that was, that was a separate, that was a separate phase.
Yes.
I'm thinking of the one that comes up here to the cul-de-sac off of one twenty-two A.
Right, and that's Pioneer.
I, I think, I think Kevin made a mistake.
So this should be Lindsey's, the old Lemon Circle, not?
Yeah.
Okay. We need to, before we send this to Clea.
I'm not gonna guarantee, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
We should probably, do you have you check with Kevin to make sure?
I'm just curious, are you all copied when those requests are submitted?
They go to the select board first and then the select board sends them to the planning board.
Yeah, but we sent those to the planning board months ago.
Yeah, this is part of the road acceptance steps, so, you know, it's probably the one.
I don't think.
That's the only reason Kevin's doing the report is because the planning board engaged him after the select board laid out the ways and then referred it back to the planning board. They did that a few months ago.
I will call Kevin tomorrow and see if I can get a clarification on that.
It might be better to, uh, email so that we can, we can have a record of it.
You have a question for the board, please?
Yeah.
Um, I've heard during this meeting and previous ones that some private conversations occur between you, Mr. Anderson, or anyone else on the board, between developers. Is there any record that you keep of these conversations that happen? Do you feel that this is something that should occur? Because these are all have to do with public town events and whatnot?
Conversations are mostly informal, uh, I don't, uh. I don't use them to base certainly any of my decisions on them or, uh, in, in any way to, uh. To make any difference with the board, um, more, as much as anything, it is just, you know. Things like, you know, okay, up to date, like I say, he was looking for these reports, he wanted to wa, wanted to know why he hadn't gotten them yet.
Okay, so if I'm.
Part of that conversation.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're saying is any conversations you have with any developer, you do not put any of that on the record, except for what's said verbally during these meetings?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I think maybe we should do that via emails, that we can have those records, so that when people ask for them or we have to go back and reference things, it's. It's all above board and it's all very transparent, that's my thought.
I don't know, it's been, it's been, it's been stand, standard practice forever, not just, uh, with me as chairman, but, um. I don't know.
Like, same thing.
Yeah, um. It's, you know, it's, it's not something that, the, the, the discussions that we, we might have, do not have anything to do with the decisions that the board is gonna be making. So, uh.
I just think it's, it's best practice nowadays to, if you're, if you're speaking on behalf of the planning board or of your company or what have you. Uh, to have all of that on record, um, so that it can be referenced later on.
Yeah, I, I would never speak on behalf of the planning board.
But is, isn't he asking for documents from the planning board and, and wondering why he hasn't gotten those documents yet?
Yes.
So that's kind of planning board business, I would assume.
I, I just, you know, I, I, I just, I, I don't see the problem. Uh, with me explaining, let's say, a, a procedure that we're following, uh, you know, you know, over the phone, uh, and I. Personally, I, I just don't think it is worthwhile to have to document every single word, sentence, thought. Uh, in, 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 in conversation.
Norm typically.
We can do things a lot quicker, in many, many cases, by telephone, uh, and that sort of thing, waiting for emails to go back and forth, back and forth. Uh, to end up with misunderstandings in the emails, uh, rather than over the phone, uh.
Question for you, Mr. Anderson, so you have these conversations with any developer, we're, we're talking about Mr. Blair in this conversation. What proof do we have about what is said during any of these events? It's a he said, she said type of event?
We don't. And, a, a, any more than, uh, you know, as I say, I'll, I'll call Kevin Quinn tomorrow, do I really, is it really that bad?
I think when you say I'm going to call them, that's fine, but the conversations that you're having with planning board business, if it's not documented. How do we follow a clear, clear trail about what's happening? And I'm curious what the other board members have to say about this as well.
From a business perspective, if I'm talking to somebody to discuss an, uh, a topic that doesn't have a decision. Doesn't have relevance to an execution of a project or something like that, it's just verbal understanding between somebody, I typically don't document that. If I'm asking for a drawing, if I'm asking for them to do something, I'll follow it up. But if I'm just saying, hey, where's my uh uh email that you owed me, or you're supposed to do that. I typically don't file, I don't file it up with an email, um because I've already done it or I've discussed it with them, so. I I see Norm's perspective of of just calling up and say, hey, can you look at this and see that uh it's Lindsey Lane or Pioneer? And then they can move on from that, because the 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 change, if if Kevin has to make it, it'll be made and resubmitted to the planning board. As a document, um if I if I called Klee up and said, hey, uh this crossing. Where where's the documentation to that? That should be, that should be in, uh what's what I'm looking for, an email. I should actually request through the board that that goes through, um when I'm asking him to submit something to the uh. But if I'm at, if I call Klee up and I just.
Which is just what I had Delia do on that.
Correct, but if I'm calling Klee up and go, hey, uh I've got this drawing here, um can you explain to me what you're doing? It it it's more of a verbal conversation of explain to me, and then if I have a problem, then I should file that up with an email. If something's wrong with his drawing and I see that, but if I'm trying to get an explanation. I I'm with Norm, I'm an old school engineer, I you gotta explain it to me so I can understand it. Emails back and forth. Typically don't give a clear picture unless you're both sitting in front of a drawing talking about it.
So question, um I I hear you're clear, Mr. Anderson and Tim, you both say no email trail. What about?
No, no, I did not say that, so you're putting words in my mouth.
Sorry, can you please?
I said if I'm having a conversation. About a topic that I need an explanation on, I typically don't file up with an email. If I'm requesting documents or something along those lines, I can follow it up with an email.
Okay.
So.
Do you feel, do any of you feel that it would be important to just keep a notebook of talk to Klee on this day? This is what we discuss like minutes like Tamika does during these meetings, just to keep a record of the phone calls?
No.
No. Tim, it sounds like you're saying no as well?
Uh I'm curious, before we go down that path, I need to know, does the town do that? Because, well, that's a question for the town administrator and the select board to answer, because if they set a policy to do that, then the planning board can discuss it. But the planning board doesn't set policy for the town.
Sure.
So therefore, I would like to hear the policy from the select board and the town administrator. Do they keep records of every phone call they take? If they do, then maybe we should discuss that, but if they don't, I don't think we should be setting policy for the town. That's my opinion.
Good point.
I do think though that with the situation that happened uh with one forty Palmagussit. And then contacting Klee and not having that in email, I can understand why the residents. Are pushing for transparency and pushing for a paper trail and pushing to know more. Uh because, you know, it it came out later what what actually was talked about and the expletives that were dropped and the actual tenor of the conversation. Um and I think that those are important details to include. I can, I can see if you're just, like you said, a quick, hey. Shoot me that email that you promised me or what have you, but I I really think that most of this stuff needs to be above board. I mean, I could have called uh the town, not assessor, but the uh the building inspector essentially. Um and asked him if he if he had jurisdiction over something that we were dealing with a few weeks ago. Uh trying to get the funds from Blair for the uh Grizzly development. And I put in an email, made sure that it was all tracked down so that I I knew what he had to say. I think that that's very important.
Through Norm, I truly believe in email trails, especially when it's potentially gonna go to a court case or it could be a legal thing, and also to keep Delia's. Files um up to date, so I I have no problem with that, but I don't typically, even in a work situation, if I'm calling to ask a question. Or to get clarification, I typically don't file it up with an email unless I need something from somebody. So I I I don't know if that's a good explanation, but that's typically how I do it, so. I don't know if that helps or hurts the board, but that's typically what I do from an engineering standpoint.
Sounds reasonable.
Norm, if I may, to Tim's point, I think it's less of a town policy and more of um the the open meeting law and and. I guess the difference between the private sector and a municipality is that everything is subject to a public records law. With the exception of um conversations between the town and town council. So sometimes it puts the staff in a difficult position when public records requests are made and we don't. We can't fulfill those requests because the information doesn't exist. And um if that individual wanted to pursue it, they could file an open meeting law violation, which goes beyond just the scope of. You know, what's talked about in a meeting, so I guess that would be my only, from a staff perspective, and I don't wanna speak for Delia, but I know she's also received requests. That sometimes we have a hard time fulfilling because the information doesn't exist on paper.
Okay, any further comment on, kind of got off track here. On three B Pioneer Circle or Lindsey Lane?
Lindsey Lane. What am I gonna do about the right of way?
I think Lindsey Lane is not on this, on the agenda. Where Pioneer Circle and Woodside have.
I I think by mistake, it's Pioneer Circle. It's this should be, this should be Lindsey Lane.
Lindsey Lane is currently under review at town council before it goes to the select board to lay out the ways. So Lindsey Lane has not been referred to the planning board and you have not engaged Kevin's services. He was engaged for Arrowhead, Woodside and Pioneer Circle.
So this is.
Back at the end of March.
Do I have it? I missed it. Well, it looks like.
And there's no easements to this here.
I guess we would know if house eight isn't, well, actually, every road's gonna have a house, unless each houses is. You know, if there's never a working number, we'd know what part of it is, I guess.
And to me, that's something that's got to be done.
Well, I think to Tamika's point, when Lindsey Lane comes up or the old Lemon Circle, we need to bring this up. Right now, I'm having trouble with Pioneer because it, are they calling Pioneer Circle? That cul-de-sac that's off of uh one twenty-two A, you know, you go down into this subdivision and you go up to the left?
Yeah, up to the left.
Is that Pioneer?
That's Pioneer Circle.
You know what I'm talking about, Norm, you go up, that's Pioneer Circle.
Yes. That is up for acceptance.
Yes, that's the one I kept thinking, that's the one at the end where it teed in, there were issues with the road.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, yeah, cuz he wanted to do that whole road and then this cul-de-sac off of it.
Shame on me for thinking that Kevin made a mistake.
No, he uh. Cuz it's it's Woodside Ave from one twenty-two A to the next phase, and Pioneer Circle goes up off of. Woodside.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the one where I. I I think it was December or January, I'd come in with pictures where the it was collapsing and there was spalding, yeah, the pavement. And then uh John wrote a letter to Klee and and that was fixed. And the con, I think the con con had some issues too at that time, if I remember right, there was washout and stuff in the road on Woodside off of one twenty-two A.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good then.
I guess um with this uh street trees, I mean, if um if there's a conversation about certain homeowners don't want trees. Maybe a list of whose waived them. We, instead of just saying, hey, no one wants them, and then, uh, you know, if there's a way to kinda. Say this, these houses, for a fact, these people have signed off on.
I think.
No tree.
Well, should we think about maybe not? I mean, I just, I wonder about the help that trees are with soil erosion compared with the issues that we're seeing on Arrowhead. If any of that might have been helped, I I don't know, but I wonder if that's a good thing for the overall development when you clear cut it. To put in some new trees, especially with the erosion and all that.
It'd be fine in five to ten years.
Yeah, the little ones I've got now.
Little ones takes a long time to start stretching your roots out for any.
Well, I know in the past, and I I forget which subdivision, you guys can might help me out, um. A lot of people didn't want the trees, so I don't know if it was Klee or Dave Lucy or Jim Susie went around. And checked with each one of, maybe it was on Woodside, so maybe it was Klee. And checked with each one of the homeowners and came in with a list to the planning board saying, this one, no, this one, no, 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 yes, no, no, no. That way we had documentation, you know.
Maybe you just wanna confer with the subdivision rules, does that speak to trees? I know that from a streetscape perspective in terms of the design, you know, certainly trees would elevate. The design of the street as it grows, so yes, the trees might be young now, but eventually they will grow.
Get so tall that they'll fall over on top of the house.
Well, you'll, well, you'll show them, you'll show them, right?
Well, and they shouldn't be close to the road cuz they're street.
See, what happened was is that um Klee was, the subdivision rules that was passed or the subdivision approval set trees at each property. He started putting them in and homeowners were coming out, he put them in after the people had moved in cuz he hadn't finished up. And when he was gone for his acceptance, one of the things that was found is he didn't put the trees and go put them in. Well, he wanted to put them in and the homeowners were.
Yeah.
We'll just say very mad.
Wasn't that Bear Hill one?
No, it was, it was Woodside, the beginning of Woodside.
Woodside, but.
And so.
Why is Bear Hill sticking in my mind too?
I think Bear Hill was.
So, instead of having enraged um residents in here, we ask him to go around and put together a list.
What was the issue specifically about the tree?
They didn't want them. They didn't, they didn't want trees on the property.
They don't wanna have, they don't wanna have to rake up the leaves.
Yep, it was, it was basically, they didn't want any, and Klee said, I'll even put it back in your yard on your private if you want me to, and they said, I don't want any trees. Don't ask me why, me personally, it saves on air conditioning when it grows.
These trees are near the street, right?
Correct, but he was trying to um satisfy the residents that he'd sold the houses to. Like, if you don't want it at between the street and the sidewalk, I'll put it in your yard if you want it there. They still said no. So, um, we ask at that point.
Well, I my concern is that, you know, if the house, well, first of all, we should be following the subdivision rules.
Absolutely.
So.
But that's why they have waivers.
Just keep that in mind.
Well, you put it in and they can tear it out, I guess.
And also the de- the um decision. So, that really should be our guide.
Put it in.
I don't know if it's wise to just be striking things here and there.
Well, at the time, we made him go to each resident and get a signed sign-off from each resident.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but then the question becomes, well, where does that stop?
Well.
I mean, if, what if they're complaining about something else?
Right, I mean, it was approved by us and the residents of the town before those people moved in. And then I I think that 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 should be followed through whether or not they want it. If they don't want it, they can cut it down. But it should be put in the way that it was signed off on and described.
I'm good with that. Fine with me, I I'm fine with that.
Sign off and not waive.
Yep, as long as there's no waiver, then Klee put them in. If they get torn down, um I'm fine with that. That's fine.
Okay, I know there's no um thing on how mature the tree is, but uh it's something maybe we have to address later in the regs. Instead of putting baby trees in.
There is a size requirement and variety.
Yeah, we did the variety due to the fact that we uh had a problem over in one of Mr. Engels.
Yeah, I remember that. I think last meeting we just mentioned, you know, some trees don't survive and what's the whole to do with that, you know, but.
Okay, okay, I'm probably doing something here I shouldn't because this is not a public comment period, but I'm still addressing the public.
I have a terrifying question. In the subdivision rules, are those trees supposed to be planted in the strip that is the town-owned property? Between like the sidewalk and the road?
No.
Or is it on the individual's property that they have to be?
Within the right of way of the road, but outside of the sidewalk.
Yes.
But in the right of way of the road is town property, right? Between the sidewalk and the road is town property, no?
No, 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 that's their property, it's just any uh right of way that the town can go into.
And put a tree there, but that wouldn't that preclude the homeowner from then cutting it down?
No, it's their property.
Wouldn't that be regarded a public shade tree?
Yes.
It's gotta be over a certain size before you go to a tree warden.
Right, but what she's saying is that it would fall within the jurisdiction based on its location.
Where's the tree? Is that what we're talking about? That's not how we set it up.
Right away.
Yes.
I guess so, somebody would have to make a complaint to the building inspector and then they have to get the tree warden involved, which is, that's.
So they should be planted where it's specified on the subdivision.
Well, that's where, that's where they tip the gar always planted. Um in the past, we were trying to give some alternates. And again, there was no taker, so it never happened, cuz they just didn't want trees, but I guess the answer is plant them where they're supposed to be. And then it's, it's not our problem anymore, then it's up to the homeowner to deal with uh the people. So if they wanna cut it down or do anything like that, they gotta go through the right procedure.
They should see your plans, right? They're public knowledge, so if I'm buying a property, I would look at what the plan is for the subdivision and see that there's supposed to be a tree there.
You should read your deed too, that you have an HOA and all that stuff, but I think there were some issues with understanding about HOAs.
I will tell you right now that probably eighty percent of the people buying these subdivision properties, they don't even know where their property lines are.
Yeah. I think he is right, if we, if we do this once, it'll be an exception, and the last thing you wanna do is start making exceptions. I'm fine with that.
Are we ready to move on?
So he's got twenty-six trees to put in, I guess. Uh more than that, there's only eleven, he's got thirty-eight to put in.
Uh I'm I'm on three D.
I'm on A, sorry, I was looking at A, A's got.
He's got a lot on A.
Yeah, A's got thirty, I apologize.
Well, that's.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, next item, scenic roads by law violation on Brooklyn Drive. I don't know if any of the rest of you have turned by, but uh. Honestly, I don't, I do not know the lot number at this point. Did we even figure that out?
It's difficult to know which lots specifically uh are and are affected, we just have an idea of roughly where it's occurring.
Anyway, he has definitely moved, I'm gonna say something like thirty feet, twenty-five to thirty feet of stone wall. In the process of clearing uh for that lot. So he is clearly in violation of the scenic road by law. And the question is exactly what procedure or whatever we're gonna follow. My thoughts are that we notify him that he is in violation uh of the scenic road by law. Uh Delia has come up with an application, which is something we never had before. Uh but gives him the opportunity to apply for permission from the planning board. Uh. Once he submits that, we'll hold a public hearing and make our determination as to.
Conditions.
Conditions, uh. Process. Yeah, I figured that.
No, the pictures we have in here is is the.
No, this is different, this is different.
This is going into the subdivision off of Campbell Street.
Campbell Street side, yeah.
We're having some technical difficulties on Zoom, but we should be up in like ten minutes.
Okay, so did we lose Alex?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Anyway, uh it would be talking about what we call in the bylaw compensatory action. And a timeline for repairing the the stone walls and the extent. Uh the thing is, we cannot deny him access to the property or driveway.
Correct.
But I believe we can set a limit on exactly how wide that access is.
Is it a dri- is it what Chris would give for driveway, a driveway cut?
It's longer than that, I think.
Probably, but you know, I again, I I don't know, you know, twelve feet, fourteen feet.
Okay. I think the first thing we should do is use, do use application and send it to. I think the first thing we should do is use do use application and send it to. Mister Blair and say, listen, we need to get this cleaned up before it gets into any.
So um I'm just gonna ask the IT team to pull up the scenic bylaw letter that is has been drafted. Because it just notes what information is missing. That we need to include as per the bylaw.
Okay.
Do they have it?
It might have issues.
I think I don't think that the IT issues should stop the projector from working, but let's see.
Not focused on something else.
Uh can you bring up that document?
Um basically, the uh I don't know if you've had a chance to read the bylaw, but the um. Final section talks about enforcement and penalties.
Yep.
So if you look at. Section seven B, it says the tree warden and or planning board, as the case may be, or designate shall define. And provide written notice of required compensatory action. And the reasonable timeline for such action. So in the letter, we need to know what needs to be done. Um as a compensatory action and there needs to be a timeline for that action.
That that would be determined at the public hearing.
So.
This is post though, so he's already.
Right. So we're not we're not we're not at the application stage at the moment, right? Where. The the wall has already been dismantled. So now how do we fix it? And what is the timeline for that for that? Or how do we address it? And what is the timeline for completion?
We address it by going through the process of him filing the application. We then hold a public hearing. We then make our decision as to the correction, the timeline, the compensatory action and the timeline. In that order. I'm I'm not I'm not gonna say we can't do something different. I don't see that there's. Any good way of interpreting.
Well, you gotta get him to engage, right? Delia, I'm looking for your suggestions. It seems like you've got a different plan.
Well, the only reason I I'm just curious about the application is because basically the application stage would bring us right back. To the point of a compensatory action.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
We could change the price maybe at that point.
No, fines are set. You can't change the bylaw.
I I guess my 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 biggest comment is, uh listen, the scenic road by law is written very, very well. For someone who follows the rules, who comes to the planning board first. It doesn't really clearly give a path for someone that has gone out and done something without getting the permission.
And that's a compensatory you're talking about, Delia. Where he where I shouldn't say he, a person has just basically disregarded the bylaw. Now what do we do? Fines ain't uh this is my opinion. Fines don't fix the problem. Fines just give monetary adjustment to the problem. We as the board would like it fixed. So that's where I was looking for some suggestions on.
So that's that's the stage that we are at now. So that would be the compensatory action. So.
I I Norm, I think I I'm somewhat agreeing with Delia. Should should we have? Cle in here and say, listen, we need this fixed. We want a plan, we want a timeline and get it fixed. Because I'm afraid if we go through the whole process. I don't know. I I I'm drawn between doing it right and we're we're past that stage. That's where I'm struggling with right now. I believe we're past that stage.
My question to add to what Tim's saying before he helps is if there is an application, when do they get it? When they A and R the the lot and then you say, hey, we know you're on a scenic by. Because they're gonna claim, obviously Brown doesn't know, no one's told them not to touch the. So when does someone, when does the application actually start, you know, because. You know, say they buy a law, say someone.
Certainly before it's just the wall is torn down.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Clearly, but um say they buy the lot twenty years ago.
Sure.
You know, is this they're gonna know that that file is there? Well, you know, and if so, when do we get each of these?
For building inspection or or will the permit?
Could Alex participate on phone since they don't have the Zoom?
Yeah, that would be great because he initiated this request, so it would be great to hear from him. So it makes and all.
Can you talk? Oh, yeah, I have to put you on speakerphone. Now, can can we hear you now? Try it again.
Can can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So the photos that came in the packet, um I just emailed you the correct one, Delia. There must have been some sort of mistake. Because the ones that I was talking about are almost directly across from where the old entrance to Bear Farm was. Um it's a little closer to the new entrance of that development. And the you'll be able to see from the pictures when you see him. Uh he went in with a with a skidder and pushed through it with the the kind of blade on the front. And then a few days later, he cleared out the entire wall from one side of the lot to the other. It's just a pile of stumps. And I think we've seen that with what he did at the end of Grizzly, uh the old the old entrance to development. We can't trust him to just do what's right. He's he's gonna hack it together and try and use a bunch of big boulders that he found on his construction site that a farmer could never pick up. And it's just not gonna look the same.
Recording in progress. Norm, if I may, I just wanna advise that if we hold a public hearing, that will end up being at a cost to the town as well.
I know.
Because we would have to pay for the newspaper publication and the um notifications, the butter notifications.
Yeah, it comes out of our revolving fund. We'd be burning, I mean, not burning through it, but we.
Uh if if you wanna go about this without the public hearing, uh but that is definitely departing from a scenic road by law.
No, Norm, I don't believe that that's the case. So if you pull section, again, if you look in the last page. It talks about enforcement and penalties. There is no mention on a hear about a hearing. Requirement. So we we are not departing from the bylaw. I would not advocate for that at all.
Okay.
The. Only thing I believe that does not require a public hearing is the fines. That's all. I just. There there's a purpose for the public hearing. Okay. And the thing the thing is, if we're going to make a decision. You have to produce some findings for that decision. I can't I don't see any other way of officially producing findings without having the public hearing.
Problem is, this is so out of order is where I'm struggling.
It is.
And and.
Very much out of order.
I know we've had even the town cut down trees of scenic ruin. We just.
Well, that's a tree ward. Over a certain size.
It's their jurisdiction.
They can take up to three and two within two hundred feet or something, but.
And Chris is real good about knowing those those laws. I'm I'm fine with him. I'm just trying to figure out, because I like Delia's idea of of. He's in violation, so how do we fix it? Without going all the way through the process and starting from scratch, but.
In the future, how did how how do you get it started?
The only way everything any anything in this town gets started is when somebody calls in a violation. Other than that, it doesn't happen because we, this is my opinion. We don't have the staff to be roaming around town looking for violations. This doesn't doesn't happen.
To be perfectly honest with you, the the only.
Luckily, he was working on my road.
Yeah.
Mine too.
You have to see it, yeah.
Yep, you got it, Norm.
You know, so you have to be perfectly honest with you. The the only case that I recall that we actually granted permission. Someone came ahead of time and granted permission, we granted permission to remove the stone wall was my driveway. That was forty years ago.
Yeah, because you you you're involved with the town.
The board this. If because he's in compensatory basic damages right now, does it make sense to call him in the next meeting? And like you said, Delia, sit down with him here.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay. Say, I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't say we should, well, that we should call him in.
No, no, you you were just saying it's in compensatory damages right now.
Right, we're we're we're.
I'm suggesting.
Compensatory action.
Yes, and I'm saying to do that, we bring him into a meeting. And advertise it that the public can be here. I'm not saying it's a public hearing, but it's.
Agenda item.
It's an agenda item. And basically force the issue of, listen, instead of going through this process, which has already not been done correctly. That we are asking you for a timeline and and a uh. And again, I'm 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 shooting from the hip now, a sketch of what you're gonna do to replace it or an update on the drawing of what's gonna be replaced and material. Um you guys you guys and ladies can think something better, but that's me just shooting from the hip. I just wanna see what the board and Delia, what do you think about that?
I mean, as long as we're still finding him, because he knew the law. He's worked on that road quite a bit. And he has another logging excavator in the woods, real close to Norm's house that went in. I wanna say Wednesday or Thursday last week. Um and there's all right around that as well. I've I've taken more pictures, but this. This guy doesn't seem to care what the board has to say. Um whether it's, hey, you owe us two hundred and fifty dollars per six hundred thousand dollar house that you build. Or whether we say, don't touch the walls unless you talk to us first. He he doesn't seem to care. He wants to do his own thing and make as much money as he possibly can. And doesn't care how it impacts the town, as long as it impacts his pocketbook and his bank account in a positive manner. I'm done with it.
I think Brown Brown has a lot to do with it too, because if they're the ones operating the equipment.
Yeah.
They're they're involved.
That sec- that second pathway uh that he's had cleared in, number one, there is no rock wall. At the road in that place and he is. I I don't know for certain, but I believe just from looking at the clearing, he's only clearing. Uh a pathway to run the sewer and water line up because at least the sewer line. Uh because that's that little extension they put on. Going down Britton Drive, that's right there. So he's, what I mean, I say he only cleared like a six, eight foot wide path. Going up. So that's just for the sewer line.
Delia, I really think under seven, section seven in the on that last page. We should be doing B right now. If that's you putting a letter together and sending it to Mister Blair.
Correct.
That's what I think needs to happen right now.
So that is where we are right now.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the letter has been drafted.
Okay.
May I speak? So I'm on vice chair of the historical commission. And I believe the historical commission has responsibility for the scenic byways, the stone walls on the scenic byways. And we don't want them touched. And if they are going to be touched, they should be coming to the historical commission. Because I believe that the you guys are responsible for the roads, but the historical commission is responsible for the stone walls on the scenic byways.
Not by the scenic bylaw, they aren't.
If if I may.
Okay, go ahead. Help me out.
Had he submitted an application, we would have looped in the historical commission and Concom.
Yes.
So.
But it didn't get filed, but the ultimate.
He didn't submit the application, so I, you know, my perspective. If the planning board is stumped, it might be a good idea to work with Concom and the historical commission to find. You know, to come up with a list of compensatory actions that would be appropriate.
I'm fine with that.
Absolutely.
Um. Concom has authority over this.
Yep, that's what the bylaw says.
I got a comment too.
Because it because it would have it up, because it could affect the trees.
You're right, you're right. You have trees, you got it.
If we go to Concom, unless there's wetlands involved, they're not gonna have anything to do with it.
Well, it's it doesn't hurt to, you know.
No, they they need to be notified.
To Michelle's point, it said scenic road designation, planning board conservation, historicus may may recommend and select board that are, this is for designation. I'm just looking for. Then I guess what.
You know, and once again. If we were to have a public hearing. They automatically would be notified of this, Concom, historic and so forth.
I'm just drawn between start- starting this whole thing from scratch. Or taking it from where it's at right now and trying to get it get it cleaned up.
Well, we are starting from scratch. You know, in the sense that we are, we're now at section seven. We're not at the application stage.
Well, that's what I mean. I don't wanna go back to the application stage. That's what I'm trying to justify to myself that we're at section seven, so. We need to go to there, start the compensatory proceedings and then try to get this fixed. And and Norm suggesting.
I you know, I I can buy what you're doing.
Okay, I'm just, but I think as part of that. Notice for that, if we would call him in for the compen- send the letter, of course, but then request that he come in so we can have this discussion. With the planning board is make sure the historical commission and conservation were doing a dual meeting, triple meeting, I guess, with us. On that same day, so we could all come to a conclusion of what we wanna do.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying that's what the board should do.
I mean, well, I mean, keep in mind that I do have to send the letter. So do you wanna have the meeting with Concom and historical commission? Before we actually speak with the developer because.
It's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
To schedule three boards on the same day at the same time.
Or should we request their advice?
Yeah, request their comment.
Request, okay.
That's probably a safer way to do it. Norm and Delia is is look, get them a little sketch of the area. Like a, what's what I'm looking for?
The assessor's map, probably.
Assessor's map, maybe. Are we off again?
No, you're all set. We're just figuring out audio stuff to make sure that the Zoom can hear.
Okay, can we get?
But you guys are all set.
Can we get that letter upon?
Yeah, I asked.
Yeah, we can get the letter up there now, yeah.
Real quick, if if you don't mind, without interrupting. Um. So you you know, in this enforcement section B, seven B, you know, compensatory uh reasonable timeline. Say, so the the wall is gone and not just driveways worth a wall, you know, a frontage worth a wall. Um if if we were to say, hey, when are you gonna fix it? Does that stop? His fine per week. So say it's three hundred dollars a week and he goes, well, I'll put it up. When I finish the whole lot, you know, are we gonna charge him?
Yep.
Three hundred dollars a week for eight months?
Shouldn't.
Or is he gonna go, hey, you took, I I asked when I would do it, I will do it.
Let him know about it.
Well, that's.
Well, I mean, the I it says that.
Because he could just say, once you, once I tell you when I fix it, then you can't find me because I've proven I'm going to do the work at some point. That's that's the loophole I'm trying to figure out if he can.
Well, it says in C, it shall.
What do I have to pay and and you know, can I argue with, you know?
Do you have my reading this wrong? It says it shall be a violation of the act of failed to perform timely required compensatory action. Subject to a fine for each week the violation exists.
Right.
See, and that and that's at least.
It takes them it takes them two months to do this project.
So actually, I mean, I don't know if you're, so.
There we go. That's what I'm looking for.
So we note the timeline for completion. So let's say that we say the completion should be August first.
Yep.
If he meets the August first deadline, then there is no weekly accrual.
Correct.
Yes, and honestly, and that's, I need to say this, okay, I was on the committee that wrote this thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Peter Crane. The intent of those fines is if they fail to take that compensatory action.
Then they're paying.
You know, that was the intent. It can be interpreted differently, but I know absolutely that was the intent.
Did our board ever approve the wall that he could he put up uh at the end of the old entrance?
In a visual sense, probably, yes.
Visual sense, not not formally.
Because that looks nothing like the surrounding wall either.
I guess we could say what wall we want.
And I think that would come in. When they um, it's Britton. If they're gonna go and have the roads, you know, accepted by the town and everything else, prior to that, he has to have that wall done.
So then I guess he did give us notification that he was going to take it out and. Maybe he gave us a deadline that he was gonna fix it in the.
That.
Way that was acceptable.
You talking about Grizzly Lane, the the extension off Grizzly?
Yes.
It was a while ago. It was a while ago.
Yeah, that that but that that. Yeah, that that, but that that road was a bypass road for five or six years?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
And now, yeah, we eventually, you guys had said put the wall back.
Forced, we forced it. When the second e- egress goes in, that road is being shut down.
Yeah.
But right at the moment, you know, he did not know if he was gonna go back in there again.
Yeah.
To do any other work, and that's why the wall was never finished at that time, you know.
Was the s- the sewer lines to connect in from anyhow.
Well, he did take it apart and put it back.
And he didn't put it back, he just put some rocks there for the time being, but it.
I wanna focus on on this one because.
Yeah.
We we gotta, we gotta make sure our act's together of what we're gonna do.
So let's take a look at the letter.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just, um.
Uh.
The the thing that that last paragraph.
Paragraph. No.
Timeline for completion is.
Can, um, IT, could you scroll down, please?
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't read the rest of it. This is where we need a touchscreen.
Uh, but basically it's ask, it's saying, please submit payment to the town, um.
A rub of that town hall.
Right, and should you have any questions, contact us, please.
Okay, alright. I just wanna deal you in that paragraph before the submit payment. That the timeline completion is. I'm okay with that, I'm just trying to figure out how to get him in in front of us to make sure that. Everybody. I'm not sure what I'm asking for. I'm trying to loop in the historical commission and the Concom at the same time.
So I think that, I think we talked about getting comments from them. Are we still, are, is there still an agreement that that sounds like a good idea? We can ask them for their suggestions on com- compensatory actions.
Yeah.
And a timeline. From the historical commission and Concom.
I think it's a good, a great idea. But then, uh, uh, what I'm trying not to do is hold off sending him a letter, letting him know and what we're doing.
Pushes out your deadline.
And that's why I was, I was struggling that.
So he he will get the letter once we have, once, once the planning board and the two other commissions have agreed on a compensatory action that we put in the letter. And a timeline for completion.
So we're gonna g- give him the timeline and when we want it done?
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was, I thought we were gonna have a discussion with the Concom and the historical and planning board. And make sure that we're all in agreement that we wanna restore to A, B, C, whatever, and then have him in and say. What's your timeframe for getting it up? And suppose he says December, we go, eh, September first, you have, just for a number. But I I'm okay with putting that in there to begin with.
But how do you know when he's gonna be able to finish the project if you don't know what the project is?
But to to.
Yeah. Pardon?
They're single family house lots.
Yeah. I, my my point now is, I guess I'm getting frustrated that. I don't really care what has to be done, all I wanna worry about is what Chris gave him for a driveway entrance. That wall can be disappeared, I'm fine with that, but any other wall needs to be restored, and now.
Yes.
That's, that's my bottom line, I guess.
And and somehow that no other walls get destroyed without prior approval.
Yeah, that that needs to be brought.
But how do we get that out there that people, if, come and get the permit?
Yeah, and that's.
Oh, yeah, cause if it just costs three hundred bucks.
Yeah, that's.
You know.
It's it's e- it's even harder than finding the people that have more than two unregistered vehicles in the house.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another bylaw.
No, don't get me going.
Well, we've only, somebody can correct me if wrong, I think we only have five historic roads in town, am I wrong?
I'm not sure of the number.
Okay, I I I know of three, and I thought there were two more, maybe there's.
I saw it as a little bit more than that now.
Okay, I I could be wrong, but.
It wasn't that long ago, we added a few.
That is correct.
Guys, I mean, I I think the action is more important, cause he's probably gonna tell us to to, you know, sit on it or something like that. I I don't think he's paid the monies owed for Bear Hill too, so I don't think he's really gonna take any action on this. I think we need to, you know, make movement as opposed to make sure that every movement is perfect. I think we need to follow by the book like Delia's saying, but I I think we need to take action.
But before we take that action, I I agree with Delia that the historic and Concom need to be looped in. Cause then we're sort of out on our own, and I'm not comfortable with that. There's a record.
Oh, absolutely, I hundred percent agree with that.
So. Okay, we send the letter out to Blair, we also send that letter to Concom and historic with a request for input. Regarding any, any.
Compensatory.
Compensatory actions to be taken.
But the letter that Delia's got, it's got a date on it for just restoration, do we wanna, um. Send that letter out without a date being in there, because then we're.
I stay, I, I, I think that.
Something pending. It's gonna be up to him.
I think that has to come back after we get any comments from them, then we have Mr. Blair in here.
So this is gonna be just so that the.
And that's when we decide.
That attendees on Zoom can hear you guys, so then you guys don't have to worry about this at all, okay?
We got one right now on a phone.
Put attendees.
Put attendees.
Hmm, and then we have some people on Zoom.
Oh, we've got more than one?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you ought to put it up there, we don't need to see ourselves here.
Uh, there's no way for us to do that, we're still working on that.
We're the only people on Zoom, so.
Is Alex still on the Zoom call?
Mm-hmm, yeah, Alex is on there now, we re- we'll take it, we'll handle it.
So, so I can take him off the phone?
Uh, as long as Alex can hear, then yes, we should be awesome.
Okay.
You get feedback real quick, Michelle.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Alright, lovely, thank you.
So I guess I'm looking from the board, do we send that letter out to Mr. Blair, and at the same time. Do I guess you'd ask for comments from the conservation chairman and the historical chairman? Is is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, a a copy of the letter and a request for.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 that's what I meant.
So you, so you wanna send two separate letters to Mr. Blair? Because the letter, the letter that we, so do we send, so should we wait for for the historical commission and Concom to provide advice? On compensatory action, the timeline? Then we send that letter to Mr. Blair. Advising him of the violation, the actions, and the date for completion. As I read the bylaw, my understanding is that the letter to Mr. Blair should state the violation, the compensatory action, and the timeline for completion.
Correct. And if we, we, if we jump the gun and just say he's in violation, and we don't have, put the other forces in it, where it's a useless letter. That's my opinion. I think we should get the.
I would, I side with you guys on that one, and Delia, I I, yeah, if that's how it needs to be done, that's, that's my vote as well, Ken.
Is that the process you were talking about?
Or to be aware that there, because there's an extra week in July, the Concom doesn't actually meet again until August fifth. I might recommend, with your permission, I can ask the chair to look if there are wetlands in the area that you're describing. Because if there aren't wetlands within a hundred feet of this area, it's not gonna be in the Concom's jurisdiction anyways. And I hate to have you waiting for them to have a meeting, just to say that. So if you're okay with that, I could do that.
When's your next meeting, Michelle?
Um, ours is August twelfth, but I'm sure, but we could probably meet sooner. Like, I think, um, I think we could all meet sooner.
I I I'd really like to get the, I, to me, I agree, I've known that area up there, the wetlands are on the other side of the road.
Yeah, so I just hate to have you wait an extra two weeks if it turns out that it's not jurisdictional.
The wetlands are on the side of the road that he's building, and it it could be within a hundred feet, I mean, especially in the wet season, it's. It's really not too far from that. The wetlands extend right along the flat spot of that road. And probably at around thirty to forty, maybe give or take yards from where he's. Uh, removed the wall and maybe less than that from the edge of the property.
Look.
They'll be able to tell, like, so they can look at the GIS and say, yep, there's wetlands, and we'll say, okay, we're gonna add it to an agenda, or they'll say, nope, it's not within the jurisdiction. And then I can, you guys can check that box off and say, okay, we don't need the Concom, and I can stay in communication with Delia on that.
I think we need to do that.
Yep.
That's my opinion. I I think we should get all the parties to, and I know it sounds like a long drawn out process, but if you don't follow the steps.
Yeah.
Um, you put loopholes available for people to slip through, and I'm not, I hate loopholes.
Yeah, uh, team effort.
Team of boards, yeah.
I just have a question for you. Uh, now, you you said, you said the historical commission has some say over stone walls. Just what? What what is your jurisdiction, what?
I don't have it on me, but in the bylaw, there is a thing about the, that we, that anyone that wants to touch a stone wall has to come to the historical commission, that we, we. We reside over the stone walls, the, of the historic byways.
Interesting, I never knew that.
Yeah, neither have I.
Yeah.
Yeah, the scenic road bylaw?
Yep.
Um, I think the only thing is.
I believe in some scenic road bylaw, but it's not, it's in the.
Ah, yeah, change.
It's in, it's in the bylaw, it's in the bylaw.
Uh.
And I'll speak up, yeah, we don't want them touched, like, we don't want them taken down and rebuilt, we don't want them touched, they shouldn't have to touch them at all.
If they gotta get a driveway, then they will.
Yeah, but they should still come to us.
Oh, no, I I agree with that, but they will be touched if there's gonna be a driveway, cause Chris will give a, a driveway per- cut permit, and then. Then they should go through the whole process of doing the application that we've talked about. And then we'll get the, all the boards in- input between the historical commission.
Yep.
And, uh, the conservation and the planning board.
Um, I'm just, I'm I'm looking for. What, what kind of, I guess I'll say, active authority you have. And I don't really see anything in here.
Do you, where did you see? Cause where I see under section three, change along scenic road. It's got tree warden for the trees, and then planning board for basically painting, tearing down, or destruction of stone walls, it doesn't say historical commission.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm s- I I'm struggling with what this bylaw.
The historical commission is listed in a whole bunch of places, but mostly it's, you know, a a copy of notice shall be sent to the.
So if you look at section five C.
Yep, that's what I'm looking at right now.
The town authority, after determining the application is complete, shall timely forward a copy of said application. To the tree warden or planning board as appropriate, as well as the conservation commission and historical commission.
Yes, yeah, that's not any action by the historical commission, that's an action that the planning board has to take.
Yeah. We could use the.
If it's an indoor wall, why wouldn't we include the historic commission?
Oh, uh, there's no problem with, uh, no problem with including them.
Yeah.
It it's a question of what kind of authority do they have?
And I can, I can look it up, I didn't bring my notebook.
Okay, and I don't see anything in the scenic road bylaw that gives them authority over anything other than probably comment.
No, we, well, I can, I can confirm.
And maybe there is.
Because I did show, yes, I did show it to, um. Uh, the former town administrator.
Yeah, and and if there is, there is.
And we talked about the road versus the walls, cause we thought we had jurisdiction over the road, he said, no, you only have jurisdiction over the walls.
Uh, cause I'd I'd like to see if you have.
I'll bring it, yeah.
I don't remember that. I don't remember that.
What?
I don't either.
Historic being on the walls.
I remember being tied in.
I, yeah, yeah, no, I I remember them being notified.
Notified, yes, but.
But like I say, it's it's a question, do they have any part in the decision ma- making other than commenting? I I don't believe so. For that matter, I don't believe, uh, conservation even has, uh, other than comment.
I mean, it does.
No, there's no place that they take a vote on on whether to approve anything about it.
Yeah, fi- I mean, five E, if it's five section ones, is planning board shall consider criteria, preservation of historic values, preservation of scenic. Which are things that the historical society can.
And.
Give us.
Could give us, yes.
Give us the right.
Yes.
Direction on, um, it would probably be good to see this expanded.
I would want an attorney with this bylaw. But that's a bad part of the public here.
Yeah, oh geez, yeah, okay. You're right, you're right.
Authority and and town approval, there's nowhere to define it.
Within thirty days of receipt.
It's so backwards.
What the hell's me?
Well, it almost, yeah, and that's why it's gonna happen more and more if if he keeps developing on that road, I guess, if there is a wall. I mean. And scenic bylaw did include trees, so even cutting down trees, um, is a violation, I think, too, so.
See, unfortunately.
And there's a ratio of what trees can be taken down, and that's where Chris has gotta get involved, yeah.
So I did speak to him, and unfortunately, he didn't have any records on which, on the trees in that area, so.
Google Maps has got good reference that about.
That's what I was hoping, but I just needed, before I went there, I just wanted to confirm whether that would be an appropriate documentation. For the existence of trees.
I've used it before. Yep. They'll even have different years that you can click through as well.
Alex, what do you got to say?
I was gonna say, also, as far as what was there, uh, previously, I can comb through my phone, I probably have some pictures, I walk the dogs there every day.
So, let me get at my thirty thousand foot level. We're going to ask the board, either through Delia or or, um, uh, email. We're gonna ask the two other boards, conservation and historical, for their feedback on compensatory and any other comments they have. On the letter that you, you're gonna send them that letter to look at, correct?
I can do that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good idea, let them look, look the letter over, come, also, just to be, this is me, I like to dot the i's. I would attach the scenic bylaw, just in case, to the email, to the two, uh, chairmen, and that way they don't gotta go digging. And then, when that feedback comes back. We, we take that feedback, working with you, Delia, come up with refining that letter, and out to Mr. Blair it goes. I think that's, that's a thirty thousand foot way of doing it. And then on that letter, the only thing I saw in that letter that I would change is I would, uh, put a response timed, you know, I I, that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I mean, there, the response, the only response we need is completion for for, on the actions. I don't know what other response.
I was like acknowledgement and acknowledgement of acceptance of, uh, of the, of the.
He's sent certified mail.
Yeah.
If he's sent certified mail, he has to sign.
Yeah, that's it, I just basically wanna make sure he got it, and, uh, and that way.
Yeah.
Cause we don't need to be micromanaging, but I wanna make sure that it's in the hands. You, that individual's got it, and then it's up to them to do the job. That's it, that, that's my thirty thousand foot level of what I think we need to do to get this thing done. Let the board, the board go from here.
This is gonna end up being a pretty long timeline.
It's gonna take a week or two, to hear back from everybody.
At least.
How's, I I guess I'll ask the board this, I think, do you know about it? Next week, there's a little sewer and water project that's happening on Brit Hall.
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna have any effect on the walls? And I I don't want an answer, I don't know, I'm not looking for an answer.
I don't know.
I'm just.
I mean, well, technically, we have no application, it's not really our place to make assumptions.
Okay.
And and that's my opinion, the appropriate, it would have, it it would have been something that we would have considered had an application been submitted.
Okay.
No application has been submitted, so what, what, what are we thinking, what are we considering?
The only thing I'm thinking is, we should ask either the DPW or the building inspector to say, is there's gonna be any effect on that? It's probably DPW, cause it's sewer and water lines.
On the wall? We're talking about the wall?
No, no.
No, no.
No, we're.
He's gonna close the road.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, what is, I thought we were talking about this, the road, like, sorry, about this, about the wall, so.
Yeah, that, yes, I think, what I'm worried about is.
We haven't touched the wall, when he's doing a sewer on the road?
Yeah.
Right, touching our walls.
Is he gonna tear it up?
And I, I, and yes, I agree, but.
I I guess I'm jumping two steps ahead of what could happen.
Right, and I, I'm, I'm just saying, had an application been submitted, we could have had that conversation in a hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, and outlined what to do.
Right.
What I'm trying to eliminate.
So should that be delayed until we can have the hearing is the question.
That's what I'm, Michelle, that's what I was trying to get at, is that should this discussion, cause I I don't know what, what, I I have to look at the drawings of what the sewer lines, where he's going.
I think that.
I mean, if it, if it's coming up. Um, uh, George Jones's property, there's no walls there, it's a, it's a driveway, it's a moot point, no. But if it's deviating one way or left where there's. But if it's deviating one way or left where there's a historic um walls there, then I then there's a question out there. And I don't know how fixed, do we need Chris to uh respond to some a question like that?
Chris is the one that notified us about the work and asked us to share it with the public, and he's already been in contact with the contractor who's doing the work. Um, but I can't confirm that the location that it is, is the same area in question.
That's all I'm trying to do, Delia, is is try to head off a problem.
Yeah, and I I to, and I I agree, I see what you're saying, but.
There's no application, so how do you head off?
Application, so right now, we're we're asking questions about something that we we have no data on.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, that's because we're not responsible for sewer and water.
Yeah, and I I just, I'm being, the one thing with me is I like to play chess, I'm gonna be two moves ahead before I. Before a problem comes up, and that seems to be a lot of times with developers and builders, you gotta be a little bit ahead, so.
Well, I was gonna say, do we ask Chris, is he gonna disturb, is Chris the, not a, not to say.
He's the overseer.
But he he would be able to tell you right away, opposed to us kinda guessing, not that we guess, but.
You might wanna send him an email.
And at least have him respond before the work starts.
Yeah, and get get a detail of what connections are gonna be made, cause the sewer lines are in on the road.
Yes, it's just a T going, T, and this is my opinion, I I don't know, cause I don't have the drawings in front of me. But I presume that that action for what was gonna be done there, they were gonna tee into the sewer line and then go up George Jones's driveway to cover. That private road that's going in there.
Yeah, and probably the other lot that's at the bottom of the hill.
Oh, the A and R lots?
Uh, that that he's, the one he ran a little path up with, and I have no idea whether. He has any agreement with any of the people on the other side of the street that happened to that sewer line.
Hmm, so.
See, I I guess I'm having a problem with the fact that they're closing the road for a whole week.
No, they're closing it for four days, is what they said, uh I I can, I would bet my bottom dollar, it's gonna be more like four weeks. But the the fact is, is that he, when he went into Mister Jones's property, there was a wall that went up that point. And there is no longer, so this problem will persist, I I don't even know.
Which wall are you talking about?
The the wall along the road that I showed the pictures of, um that we were just talking about, as far as right across from the entrance. Uh, the old entrance to Grizzly.
Yep.
Then he, you know, put the the uh wall across of that road, that wall along the right side where they put. The uh the sewer line in, as it went, that wall went up and over. Uh, where Mister Jones's property is and where they cut in, they took out that portion of the wall. You could see it on the other side of his driveway where it continues and goes on down towards uh where Norm lives at the base of that hill.
It's possible, I I can't, I can't say that I recall, cause you know, the the wall appears and disappears, appears and disappears. So I I honestly, I can't recall.
Plans that probably don't show a wall going back in, so. All I, all I'm trying to do is get Chris aware that, is there a problem? And be aware that if i- if if there's gonna be sewer construction. And there's more scenic walls coming down, and you're the town official on them.
Yeah, keep people informed or.
Yeah, you you shouldn't be allowing stuff to happen, cause you're violating bylaw.
Can we send that in an email?
Yeah, I just didn't be the one to send it, I I don't think I should be sending.
I don't wanna speak for Chris, but he's aware of the scenic road bylaw, and he's been in communication with Delia about what's been happening. So I don't imagine that he's totally out of the loop of that he's gonna let that happen.
Okay.
We just spoke about it yesterday.
Alright, I'll stay out of it, good enough, move on.
I I mean, there's nothing prohibiting you from contacting Chris, I mean, a- as I said, I'm not speaking on behalf of Chris.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
That. No, we have no, there was no application that was submitted. With regards to what the intent was with regards to the wall.
Yeah.
So.
Saying we're not even going near it, or saying we are, you know, yeah.
So, I can't speak to what is happening with regards to this, to 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 the construction, to be honest with you. I I was the only, I only found out about that road closure this morning when I opened the website, so. I was not notified or anything like that, so if you would like to reach out to Chris. I I don't see a problem with it, I'm just saying that.
I don't wanna speak for the planning board, cause I'm one individual, I'm not the board, so I'm just not, I don't feel comfortable doing that.
I don't know, I think it might be in it's interesting to get some details from him.
I think that would probably be a good idea, cause last time when this happened in February, I think they said they were gonna close the road for three weeks. Or sorry, three days, it'd be in a, I think almost close to four weeks. And when we asked, uh when I asked Chris about it, he was told that he was never informed, which is why. He wasn't able to pass that along to anyone else, so I I'd love to at least try and find out if he was, when he was informed or anything like that.
You know, I I'm I'm just assuming that Chris knows the details of the work that is going to be done.
Yes, hopefully, yeah, I wouldn't see why he wouldn't, yeah. I'm sure if there was a problem, he would probably bring it up to any anyone necessary, but, I mean.
But the fact is that he hasn't done it in the past, because they messed up the wall.
Assumptions, though, I mean, we can always.
No, I know, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it it shouldn't be doubled down on or whatever. So, I'm in agreeance, just to, just to have him confirm, there's no, there's nothing to worry about, I guess. Which is what I think you've mentioned, needing details, just just coverage on that.
Or if there is, let's get on top of it.
Yeah.
Like I say, it just, you know, I.
Today's.
I I would love to think that the only work they're doing is gonna be the entrance up to Hilltop and that one other sewer connection down at the bottom of the hill, but I don't know that. It could be more than that.
Let me ask through Norm, can can we just, I'm looking at an email, and again, this is back in February to Alex's point. John sent an email to Chris, could you pro- please provide the board with a copy of. The sewer extension plan for Hilltop Estate, there is some concern sewers being extended further than it's supposed to be, thank you. Can we ask that simple question to Chris, Delia, have you read it, just send him an email and then copy the board members? Asking Chris, could you provide the board with the sewer and water plans for July. Twenty eight through August first, I think that's what it was set up for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brought that to you, yeah.
And and it's, and then copy the board, cause that keeps, I mean, let me phrase that, it keeps me sending an email out of open. Meeting violation by copying everybody on the board, other than just, if you send it and copy us, we're clean.
Well, you're not deliberating, so.
I know, but I I don't wanna deal with.
Yeah.
Let's just say there's individuals that would love to take a shot at me, and I'm not in the mood for it, so I'd rather not have it happen, it's my opinion. Anyhow, that's.
Could we also include the historical commission, because it would affect us if he's.
Okay, are we done?
Yeah.
I think.
No, we don't have to be done. Everything that's supposed to happen, but anyway. We didn't have any, Delia's here to help, that's why.
Yeah.
But we didn't have any reports, right, other than the Bryce Lemon consultants?
Nope.
That was a discussion that Alex Alex asked us to add to the agenda, so um Alex, would you like to chime in on um item number four, subdivision monthly reports?
Yeah, absolutely, um, we have it in these special agreements with uh a lot of these subdivisions that we're supposed to be getting monthly reports. And I understand, uh as has been brought up to me several times, that there are. Instances when no work happens on these sites during the month, and in my opinion. Um, and the opinion of of others that I have spoken with, that's probably gonna be the easiest report they have to do. Nothing happened on this site, no one was here, the end, send it for the month of July. It is extremely important that we have on paper documented transparently. Everything that they are telling us happens on the site during the month, so that we can go back and check that versus what's actually happening. We can be hopefully kept up to the up to date on stuff, and if we are not, we can call them and say, why was this not in the monthly report? We have some sort of uh paper trail to go back on, I I I think having more oversight. Is going to uh help this board going forward, uh as opposed to hinder it. It might take a little bit more time out of us, but I I think that it's very important for the work that we're trying to do.
Any thoughts?
Um, I agree, um. You know, it it seems like it's easy to just say, well, we know he's building a subdivision. And you can sit back and just kinda watch it happen, but with what's been going on with a lot of people in town, uh with their properties. Um, years later, and they kinda wanna know in some way what what happened on the site. Um, I I guess if we've asked him to do reports, it it should happen, and um I think it's. It, like Alex said, the easiest document he has to do is write, no, no work done on site, you know, then. And but yeah, I guess the wo- the one thing I can see happening is is, and I think Alex mentioned is, is there is no paper trail for for the work. And not that we assume that everything they're doing would be in contra- you know, they wouldn't be actually doing the work that they said they're doing. You know, versus what they actually write down they're doing, I'm not saying that happens every time, um. But at least some some way, there's a way to help out people that have bought these properties. Um, and if if there is a violation, yeah, there's there's a moment there to actually say, we, you know, well. And it would prove it too.
Had this for Arrowhead, and he was talking about where he dug the swale after he noticed all the problems, he said. There on the Concom meeting, uh Mister Blair said, you know, there was an issue and then I fixed the problem. Um, if we had had site reports about that, we could have gone out there and checked on the on what his solution had been. And whether we thought it was uh worth the time or not, and I think that could have really helped us in this current situation.
How is it written? How do you submit those reports?
Okay, and that's, I'm not sure.
And he here's my next question.
Put it this way.
If, I thought it was just an act.
We kinda informally decided to require monthly reports. I don't think we set it as a policy, it's not written anywhere, there may be in the conditions of some of the subdivisions, and I'd have to look them up. Uh, I I don't recall in any of those decisions, a a specific item requiring monthly reports.
Yeah.
So, um. If if we're going to do it, we have to take some formal action, let's put it that way, to say that we are now requiring them. Uh, whether we we call it a policy or whatever.
If we do that, I, Delia, piling on top of you something else, we should have a common report report form. That all developers follow, so we don't get in different forms and different pieces, so. Um, I don't know, I mean, we don't have anything to start from.
There might be.
There might be.
There's a whole appendix, uh with with our subdivision regulations and.
I'll look.
There's forms, I know, at least all the way up to the letter K, I remember that.
I just don't remember, all I was, all I was saying is, we need a common report form that goes out to all the developers. Otherwise, we're gonna get, we could get one this big, we can get one, you know, one line item.
Yeah, half filled out.
Half filled out, yeah, so.
Complete, I guess.
I think we need a common form.
I I I'll.
Two paragraphs versus maybe, you know, sixty pages.
I I'll bet there's a form.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, didn't John do away with these reports, was there like a a form or a format that they had before that?
No. No, there wasn't.
Remember Carl Hulgren used to go out monthly and Dave George had it on every single agenda as a running agenda item?
Yeah, cause cause Quinn's basically was the report, the monthly report on the.
Right, and the board was engaging them to go out.
Correct, yeah.
But then I think we stopped engaging them to go out, cause John said he didn't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for John, I just know that it stopped when. John transitioned into that position.
Well, Carl was going too, that was the other thing, cause Kevin, Kevin was overwhelmed with the uh.
Yeah.
But.
It always went to an as needed thing.
Yeah.
Usually it was from their engineer.
Well, yeah, and that's that's the other thing that uh, I don't know if it's clear anywhere.
Yeah.
Is the report supposed to come from the developer, or is the report gonna come from our consulting engineer?
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of people who could write that report, and who do we hold more accountable or?
I'm I'm talking way back, and it was the developer that had his engineer every once in a while, send us a report, that that was. Yes.
Uh, what do we wanna do now?
Yeah, and do you want it in a monthly report, or do you want?
No, I I I think.
One month.
If we're gonna do monthly reports, we're we're talking what, four subdivisions?
Yeah.
It's four reports, it's it's not like it's gonna bury us in paperwork.
Yeah, okay.
So, I I think we should, to Norm's point, I don't know if there is a form, but I guess need to look and see if there is a form. And that form should go out to all the developers in an email saying, expectations, if you're working on a subdivision, we expect a monthly report using this form. That's it, done.
Yeah, I think if we can look at some of the surrounding towns, especially like Holden, uh and other places where. Uh, some of these developers tend to to run, uh, we might be able to get some some good boilerplate for how to. Develop a template or or what have you for this, uh going forward.
Through Norm.
Let's listen, let's look at our own forms.
Yep, so I was gonna say. And if we don't, I I was gonna say, give Dave George a call. And Holden, and ask him if he's got a form.
Yeah.
For monthly reports, and could you help out a great town you used to work for and send it to us? And preferably in a word format, so you could modify and take out Holden and put Rutherford there. And then we could send that out to developers and say, our expectations is moving forward, and maybe Norm's is a policy. That the planning board is requiring monthly reports on all active subdivisions.
Let's find, let's find a report for.
Yeah, we gotta do step by step before we get there, but.
Next meeting, we can adopt a policy, I don't think we have to have a public hearing or anything like that. We can simply adopt a policy, and then we notify all of the builders.
Yeah.
Here's the form, uh, and.
You'll be providing monthly reports on subdivisions.
Failure to do so will.
We don't have that portion set up yet.
But we will. What about A and Rs?
Can't do that, you cannot require A and Rs to have reports.
Yeah, okay.
A and R has a frontage and a and and it's.
Approval not.
Once it's, yeah, once it's approved, the whole building of it and anything like that is on the building inspector, it's not on the planning board anymore. So I don't wanna dip our feet into somebody else's pool.
Okay.
That's my opinion, you guys can think what you want, but I wouldn't ask for reports on A and Rs.
So, okay, we'll settle on that one.
I think so.
Okay, Tim, you're on.
Uh, I. The bylaw subcommittee was disbanded when I left. When I was, so, um, when I said there was no leadership, I mean, I was gone for a couple months, so I wasn't in charge of anything. I don't think there was any meetings, so I guess I would ask the board, do you want me to take that chairmanship over and start?
I'm emotion so moved.
Let me finish.
I haven't got time.
And 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 prioritize what needs to be done, cause we've got probably five, six. Um, sub bylaws that need to be brought before the bylaw subcommittee.
Norm, if I may, can you guys officially open that portion of your meeting as the bylaw subcommittee? Was it posted?
You're back, so you're still the chair.
But it's, it's, I don't know.
What we're doing is.
This is beyond.
Planning board, setting it up.
Well, it is a reorganization.
Subcommittee is a separate committee, it just happens to be made up of the same members.
So. I.
Who's the vice, who's the vice chair of the bylaw subcommittee? Who is the vice chair of the bylaw subcommittee, that person could open the meeting.
Or it was, I think it was you.
I think it was me.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Do I wanna make a big leap that might be a mistake?
Um, well, you're you're the vice chair, aren't you?
Well.
Next in command.
I I will, okay, vice chair in the absence of the chair is the acting chair.
And you have to nominate someone to that.
So, well.
You gotta open the meeting first.
Somebody to open the meeting.
So as acting chair, uh, I'm going to open the. Uh, July twenty second meeting of the bylaw subcommittee at uh eight twenty one. I don't know if that's legal. Honestly, I don't. I think it is. Okay, so under reorganization, I'll.
And make a ma- make a motion that Tim is the chair. Of the bylaw subcommittee. I'll second that, or if Alex wants to, Alex second it.
Is there any discussion?
I think it's a good idea. Uh, Tim had mentioned we have a lot of work to do. Um, there's five or six bylaws and we gotta organize it. I'm gonna be honest with you, the, since the committee's opened up, the primary one I'm thinking of, and this is with everybody here, including Alex. Is what Norm mentioned about getting that uh.
Site plan.
Site plan thing. Um, so first thing the committee, which I'll have to distribute is Worcester's. Um. Uh, they don't call the bylaw in in a city. It's something else, an ordinance, I think. Actually, they call it an ordinance. But some, send that ordinance out to everybody on the committee. And then have them look it over and start doing some homework on. Because a- again, not seeing it, I know in full well that Worcester is huge. I'm sure there's sections of that that can't, we can't apply to Rutland and we'll have to. But again, having something to start with, we can cut base. And then there's, there's other ones, sixty eight that we gotta talk about. There's um, uh, potential uh expansion of lot sizes and frontage.
Yeah, lot sizes and frontage, yes, sir.
I mean, tha- that was brought up, um. Oh, there's some other ones too, and then we gotta talk about uh, um, up on Palmaguss at what we're gonna do with um. Help me out, I can't, I'm having a brain, a brain loss right now.
Uh.
The industrial park.
Yes.
And then the offset to that is, is that there's been some interest from that industrial park of potentially using Dave Putt. Not Putnam's property as a industrial parks. We're gonna have to talk about that. That's another thing.
Yeah, the village center.
And then there's some other bylaws for codification. There's an open space bylaw that needs some updates. That uh John Carbono sent. As soon as I get that from, I asked him to do me a favor. I wanna send it to you to look at. He was gonna do some markups that he was gonna finish before he left. And he didn't get it done, so I ask a favor, could you do it on uh Douglas time and send it to me? But I wanted, I want you to get it and take a look at it and get your comments before it becomes, before the bylaw subcommittee. That's it.
Anyway.
That's an overview.
We gotta vote still.
We have a second?
I s- uh Alex seconded, unless, did you do that, but he didn't.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, accepted.
Okay, unanimous.
Now, we need to organize for a vice chair. And secretary, those are the two. You know who my favorite secretary is.
Oh, yeah. I'll nominate Norm for vice. Uh, second, I think it's a good idea.
Any discussion?
Uh, discussion, um. Good, good choice.
I think we got a lot of work ahead, more than we've probably ever had.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And and again, I think with Norm's help, we can. Prioritize these, that's what I was looking for. It's what we can get done.
Read the language that's out there and and find the best stuff for for the town.
Okay, that's it for me.
Mr. Anderson, if I may bring two laws to your attention you may find helpful with your bylaws. It is Mass General Bylaws Part One, Title Eight, Chapter Forty One. Section eighty one G G. That gives the planning board um powers. If you guys can please refer to that, I won't read the entire law. That may be beneficial when you are making some of these bylaws.
I'm familiar with that.
You are familiar with that one?
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
That's why, that's typically just a quick explanation, the the bylaw subcommittee. We'll prioritize them, give them to the planning board. They'll refer back what they want the plan, the bylaw subcommittee to do. And we'll do all the, we wanna call it legwork. And then, once that's voted on by the bylaw subcommittee, it goes to the plan. But the bylaw subcommittee has no authority to send anything to town. So once we're done with it, we'll send it to the planning board to basically review and then forward on for a warrant article with the select board.
Okay, so I'm glad that you folks are aware of that. That's one thing that I've been doing in my research and the team that we have going on.
But it's zoning. It's only on zoning that we have authority. General bylaws, the planning board doesn't have any authority. That's under the the by bylaw committee, yes. So, that was another one I wanted to bring up while I'm talking with the town here. I really need, I think that signed by law needs to be brought under the zoning. Because the planning board did it. When I say did it, they put together the signed by law. So I really think it should be pulled under the zoning enforcement and not left as a general. My opinion.
That was before you got ripped apart.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anyhow, that's that's discussion, so.
Vote on Norm?
Yes, aye.
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 Alex? Did we lose him again?
I said aye, you couldn't hear me?
No, I couldn't. Thank you, sir. Okay, five oh, all right. Um, next one we need to.
Secretary make the.
Secretary.
Nominate Keith.
I'm gonna nominate my hero. Keith Tuttle, do you accept?
I'll suck that, suck a nap.
Yeah, yeah, I'll keep doing it.
Okay.
Did a damn good job, so keep it up.
There's a lot there.
Yes. Any, any uh questions, comments? All right.
I could use a new computer that's in the budget.
I know where there's actually a new computer in the fire station that could potentially disappear. I'm sure Seth heard that and I'll be getting a phone call tomorrow.
Aye.
Uh, vote, aye, aye. Alex?
Aye.
Perfect, five oh.
Okay.
All right, I guess that's it.
When are you gonna have your first meeting? Three or four days?
Sometimes they're after the planning board or mixed in with the planning board, and sometimes they're on their own, so it it just depends on. Gi- give me, I I I haven't done any organization, so the the big thing I wanna do is, and Dee, I could probably work with you on this. Is is find that Worcester site plan uh ordinance.
Yeah, I believe you sent it out to.
I don't know.
But it, that might have, and now I can forward it to you.
Can you forward it to me? Please do that, and then.
I've definitely got it.
Anybody got, I don't care if I get twelve emails sent to me cuz um unless somebody has an uh issue on the bylaw subcommittee. That's priority number one.
The only thing I'm thinking is, I have it, I have not looked at the whole thing. I don't know how long it is. It could be twenty five pages. Uh.
On that, just, just the, just that particular clause? Are you talking about?
This is, this is a whole.
I knew you highlighted a subsection of it, but I think the whole thing is it, how it governs itself in in.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
And and again, I I have not looked at it yet, okay, you know, in in depth because uh. Just thinking about number one, the city of Worcester, with the fifteen million zoning districts that they have. And the fact that supposedly it covers. Any building on any lot. Not just subdivisions, it's any building, any lot, okay? Uh, my my guess is that it's fairly complicated. The other thing I I don't know that, you know, I'm kinda looking for, you know, do they have any restrictions? You know, do they have any requirements for, you know, no slopes greater than ten percent? So it could be very lengthy and I guess I could print out my own copy, but I would love to have the town print a copy for me.
In case it's long.
In case it's, in case it is twenty five or fifty pages long.
Let me, Dee, when you send it to me, I'll look at it. And if I gotta, if I gotta print out five, six copies, then I will and get it to everybody. And then the next step is um, and this is for Mister Williams particularly, get a new red pen.
Yeah.
And and start, and I'll ask for homework, basically taking a look at it. Yeah, I I, it's always been a smart, I like, and uh I really. You know, I know this is crazy, but I'd really like to see if we could pull this off for the fall town meeting. I don't think it's a possibility, but doesn't hurt to try.
Yeah.
Aggressive is good.
Well, keep, keep it as a goal, at least.
Yeah, as a goal.
Yeah.
So I guess, right now, to me, yeah, or Dee, you can, you advise the select board that. As of now, unless Dee's got some other thing, we might, we might be pressing to have one up, one zoning bylaw article. Just to let them know. I wanna give them a heads up as early as possible.
Yeah, so just as a frame of reference, the warrant's probably gonna open mid-September.
Okay, I don't think it's a possibility, but we might get lucky and and Mister Redhands over here does all the work for us.
It's gonna go through legal review and everything else, too.
I know, it's gotta go through KP, so. That's, I guess, Norm, this is for Dee and for Tameka. Is, could somebody get me as on the, as chairman of bylaw subcommittee, a land. Attorney from KP that we can talk to. I just don't want a regular attorney. I want a land attorney that has land experience. That's, that's, and I don't know how to ask for that. Is that through the town administrator? We ask for that cuz I just don't wanna land, I don't wanna lawyer that just dabbles in land court.
Doesn't know.
I I need somebody with experience.
Yeah.
Cuz I've already been down the road of what happens when you don't have experience with Wachusett Street a year and a half, two years ago. I don't wanna go through that again, so I I guess I'm asking. And maybe that's through Dave. Dave needs to, cuz I think we have to ask him for all legal.
I would say, yeah.
So, that's all I'm asking. If you get a chance, ask Dave if he could talk to KP and get us a reference for a uh land attorney.
You could probably just shoot David an email.
Okay, I can do that. I just know he doesn't, last I heard, he doesn't have time except for searching for a uh town administrator, so.
Tim, just shoot me an email. I can give you the names of the land use attorneys, and then if you wanna follow up and get permission from David to reach out.
Oh, if you've got those, Tameka, that'd be great.
I know who does the land use stuff.
Okay, for KP? Oh, that would be great, cuz then I could just use that and uh make sure Dave's okay with us when we wanna talk. Again, this will be for the whole committee, but I wanted, cuz I know Sh- Sharon and some of the other ones, uh Roger we've used. And I don't, I was looking for specifics. Okay, perfect. If you send me, thank you. Go through Dave, send him an email. Perfect, okay.
That helps that.
That's it. I got nothing else for the bylaw subcommittee, so if there's nothing else, I'll close it.
Mister Chair, um, last planning board meeting, you said you would consult uh council about some certain bylaws. Disallowed did not happen. I thought that you were, um, you folks were going to consult town council about something. I had that in my notes to remind me for this time. I'm not sure if this is for the bylaws question or if this is for the planning board question.
It's planning board.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. I was like, I was getting scared. Did I promise something? I didn't remember.
We have, and I don't think we've gotten a reply yet.
Correct, we're still, we're still waiting on a response.
Thank you. Do we know when that response, when that query went out?
Um.
Uh, it's gone out and you followed up at least once.
Yeah, very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'll close the, uh, if there's no other thing, I'll close the bylaw subcommittee at eight thirty five.
We need a motion and a second.
Oh, let me make a motion, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second, all right. Uh, any discussion? Okay, Alex?
Yes, sir.
Dick?
Yes.
Keith?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, five nothing. Meeting closed and back over to the planning board.
Okay, uh, item six, town administration search process recommendations. Uh, I'm pretty sure you were all copied.
When did that, when did that email come out, Norm?
They just would like some input of what kind of qualities.
Wednesday, July ninth.
Okay, thank you.
I believe it was the original email.
What qualities that we should be looking for in the town administrator? Uh.
Oh, in fairness, in thinking back, it was sent to the chairs and then asked to be dispersed to the individual board members at their discretion. So I don't know if it was dispersed to all of the board members, but it went to all of the chairs and town staff for those boards.
Ah, that's maybe why I didn't.
I don't know if Dee, if you sent it out.
I I know we did include, well.
Yeah, so it wasn't.
It is in the packet.
It was in the packet.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Last page of the packet.
Okay.
Uh, it seems like a new.
Think maybe, but uh I could have printed this thing out myself.
I don't have. Am I missing?
To the office of the inform town administrator.
I ain't got nothing on that one here. I got here, it's TA search process. Is this the one, Tameka seven oh nine?
So there was another email that was sent out as well, TA search process. This was sent on the seventeenth, it was sent to the board and the attachment. This was attached.
Okay, I understand.
On the seventeenth.
Yeah. Well, I think this is probably more an individual response.
Yep, Dee, you were correct to send it out.
For anyone that wants to make a comment on.
Is it still open?
Yeah, we're seeking responses by September second.
Oh, okay.
I think it says you can make them publicly, publicly or through email.
I'll send email back.
Yeah, so if it's a, if it's a board discussion, it has to be at a public meeting.
Email before you send it.
But that doesn't prohibit individual members if you, if you have comments based on yourself.
Okay.
Individual, but yeah, anything board related has to be publicly discussed.
I don't think anybody would like what I wrote.
All right, aye.
Okay.
So, Tameka, this email that Dee sent on, should I go back through her for open meeting law or should I go directly to you?
So we're asking for everybody to send it to us, to send it to our office, and then David is gonna collate all of the information. And share it with the search firm and the select board.
Copy you anyhow.
Yeah, that's totally fine to copy, Dee, yeah.
Okay, and Norm will copy you too. Okay. That way, copying you, Norm and Dee, I'm not open meeting cuz I'm not doing a majority. Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Norm, did you not ask us to read the road accepted policy?
Yes.
At our last meeting?
Yes.
Question, does HOA have any effect on this policy? Or does town take over all detention ponds and all tributaries to said ponds? Bryce Lemon, that was the first time that we ever had a HOA that was gonna take over the detention ponds. And that is going to be.
They're responsible for cleanout and maintenance.
And maintenance, and anything that might happen, and you know, you have lads surge your water and things get ruined.
Light bursts.
And who knows what. And I'm sure if they fail to make any remedies, they're gonna make the town fix it.
No, the town will come and fix it and then charge them.
Or back.
Should be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But is it written as such?
I guess we should probably look at the orders or the uh.
Conditions.
Conditions.
Uh.
And then the HOA document itself.
Seems like we've been, we've been all over the place on on that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, just keep thinking of a deer run.
Mm-hmm.
Detention pond is on a guy's house lot.
Yeah. It was up to him, that's for sure. But uh, how how many other uh subdivisions around here that had detention pond? Have we had anybody look into them or you know nothing about?
Lenny's, Lenny's two properties that he built, that was under the DPWs. Cuz I remember Gary was going to go clean out a detention pond and somebody put a fence in his path.
Yeah.
And he helped that fence come down. And he helped that fence come down.
The only, the only one that I really know anything was done was when we accepted Nate's Way. Uh George Lucier, they did go down and apparently cleaned out the detention pond there.
I was with you guys when we did an inspection on what was that road that's across from where Pleasant Dale or? Put not, it's on Pleasant Dale, but uh the new subdivision might be going in, there was a brand new road, and there was a detention pond on the right of that road.
Yeah, on the right-hand side, going going towards Treasure Valley.
Yes.
Yeah, lawyers.
It was a a a basically a looped road that was a somewhat.
Yeah, oh yeah.
There was a, there was a tension pond, it was one of my first, I got to go out with you guys, and we got to walk it, take pictures and 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 explain to him that all the stuff in the middle needs to be cleaned out.
And has it, has it, has it been inspected since then? I don't know, Dick, and that's what I'm concerned about, because uh that in the future, it could come back and.
Oh, I'm sure we probably have detention ponds with eight-inch trees growing in them.
Yes, that's what I'm afraid of.
Is your comment with the road policy is because pipes in the road feed the detention pond, like storm drains, is that what, how you're bringing it up?
Well, the road acceptance policy, you know, is all easements and there's a lot of easements and stuff that, you know, storm drains is in the road.
Yeah.
Access to.
So is that, is that the town, or is that the HOA? And Bryce Lemon, this Bryce Lemon is the only one that I know of that has an HOA.
On the pond.
Lenny Gengels one was uh something happened on that one.
It was given over to the town, if I remember right.
Turned down and town took over supposedly everything else on it.
So, I I don't know, my my biggest thing when I read that street acceptance policy was that I had have no idea. Well, two-thirds of the documents that they're listing in there that they require. You know, I I don't know whether, first of all, what they're for, and number two, whether those documents probably have already been provided at the application for the subdivision.
Yeah, I had, as built to be reviewed by town engineer.
Which we do.
Which we do. And uh legal descriptions, and I put down here bound markers.
That's part of the subdivision.
In ground.
Oh.
And uh are are they inspected? I'm trying to think, it it, I thought somebody had told me once that um they had had to get an engineer and found that their bounds was not in the right place. Notice the owner, so which I provide written notice, and I said certified mail, it should be. Future meetings, open spaces that. That's discussed. Um oh, update title certification applicant. Applicant's attorney must submit to the town an updated certification list of names, address of the person, then owning the fee to the road and all easement area, and I should, should there be a copy of the deed? To make sure that the easement is in that deed.
Let let me see. Yeah, it's.
So, and then the last one on the thing, I said a hundred and twenty-day period at the applicant's expense. And I said, who verifies this particular thing, grant of easement and layouts?
Do we, no, the select board went through that document too.
Well, yeah, this is the Worcester County, this is town meeting votes are recorded with the Worcester County. Reserved deeds within a four-set hundred and twenty-day period, and I said, you know, who keeps track of that?
That was gonna be my next question, that policy, that's select board policy?
Well, so John drafted the policy, the planning board approved it, it went to the select board, they officially adopted it. So yes, technically, it's a select board policy, but it was crafted by the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm trying to think, if if there's any updates to that, do we update it? And then submit it to the select board for revision policy?
We could.
I'm just, I'm asking, that's all I wanna know, do we do a revision to it? I mean, that's just, yeah, it might not be such a bad idea, it's just a thought process.
It's a good thing that the bigger part of that is on the select board's. Docket, not ours, uh because for all of those different documents that they want, that sort of thing.
Alright, well, I've just.
No, those documents would come through the planning board, the only responsibility of the select board is to lay out the ways and refer it back to the planning board.
So we'd be responsible for collecting all those documents?
Correct, which is, I don't wanna speak for Delia, but that's why Delia indicated that the Lindsay Lane Street acceptance is not complete.
Cuz that had deeds in there and stuff like that, anyhow.
Yeah.
I'm I'm gonna walk.
Wow, um where are we gonna get any extra money? To get her help? All I can see is more stuff piling on her left and right.
That's what I'm.
And uh cuz that's one of the things I had said for the TA, less rules and regulations, easier to live in town.
Yeah, well, I've got something, Norm, if we're done with that one. Uh here goes my fun one, my understanding, and Delia or Tamika can verify this, that Wachusett Street's been officially renamed to Mile Way, is that a correct statement?
That is correct.
Then, I think the planning board needs to engage an attorney and find out if the A and Rs that we approved should be undone. Because if it's a private way, that's not what we approved, we approved a A and Rs on a town road. We did not approve him on a private way, so we were given wrong information, we approved A and Rs on wrong information. I wanna know if there's anything that needs to be done to undo that or redo it. And I, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know those answers, but I'm asking the board, is that something that we should engage?
Yes.
No comment, I hired a lawyer today.
Oh, Alex, what do you think?
Um I guess. I I see, so I I'm a big standing on principle person, and I I see the principle behind that. Uh that it's not what we approved, uh but is there an end game, like is there, are we just trying to get them to come back and and change the name and let us know that it's private? Or is, I I guess I just don't know what the, what we're trying to get to accomplish.
What I.
The righteousness of what you're saying.
Uh the reason I wanted to do it correctly is because typically you have the ability to de- deny A and Rs if the road's not, the road or the uh the uh private way is not accessible. That's one of the, um if I'm not mistaken, denials of A and Rs, if there's not accessibility. I could be wrong, but that's again, need an attorney to tell us that, I am not an attorney, I just remember reading Deval's Patrick's little book of of case law, and one was accessibility. So, that's, Alex, that's. That's, that's my end game, to find out, give the planning board a chance to do the right thing, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Because we were said, we were told this was a town road, it's not, from what my understanding is. So, we didn't approve a A and R with the correct information. That's my opinion.
I agree with you a hundred percent, uh I think, you know, we we struggle sometimes to find uh our our uh responsibility, our jurisdiction, and I I think that it's important that when we, it does come within our jurisdiction, we exercise our power as we can, uh so that it, so that they follow the rules that we set forth, I think that's very important, so yeah, I would agree with you.
So, what I'm asking the board is, should we, we're gonna have to spend money from our revolving fund to engage a land court attorney at KP to ask those questions, I was looking for the board. Cuz I know the young lady's just gonna have to talk to the attorney and find out, what do we do?
I mean, I just. Just wanna make sure that we're very clear on what the ex- what the expectation is, um.
Okay, we we.
I just wanna advise, the building permit process is already underway, the road's been made accessible, public safety has signed off on it.
That's great, but that's not.
I just fear it could open a can of worms.
Open it up, because uh I'm tired of hearing the planning board being blamed for this whole road, and if it's been done incorrectly, I want it done correctly. Sorry.
As it pertains to the name change.
No, as it pertains to the approval of the A and Rs. I don't care about the name change, what, when the name was changed, it was changed because it was a private way. And that's not what the planning board, when they did their decision of the A and R, was given from the town clerk. We were, we were told it was a town road, and therefore, the A and R process was almost um without being uh non-accessible. Um we really didn't have, we didn't have much to say. So if it was a private way, there'd have been a little bit more latitude of looking into it, if there's accessibility. Does, does, is there potential for drainage, things like that.
Right.
With a town road, we had no, couldn't go anywhere. So that's the reason why I brought it up, is now that it's been deemed a private way, I think when we approved this, we didn't have all the information. And I wanna know, is there any recourse, or is it like, like Tamika said, it's underway, and it's a moot point? That's the reason why I thought we should engage a land court attorney.
We, no, we approve them, having been given wrong information.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if you can, uh uh, you know, just so that I know what I'm asking, if if somebody can put that in writing so that I know what.
Not that, uh we, yeah.
Just, just to be clear on what the attempt, you know, what what your end goal is, um you know, the premise for why you're making that request, and then I can maybe ask, you know, from there.
I might recommend also referring back to the meeting minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, because there was, and I only noticed off the top of my head, cuz we were reviewing them for the select board, there was discussion amongst the planning board as to the validity of whether or not that was a townway or a private way. And um Dick recused himself from the discussion, and the board decided to move forward with considering it a public way, but there was some discussion, there was a little bit of wavering there in that, that discussion.
Didn't we also um request a clerk to give us clarification in that meeting? Before we voted on the A and Rs, that's how I recall it, but maybe I'm wrong.
I don't know, because you voted on it that same night.
I thought we, okay, I'll have to go back and look.
Yeah, de- double check, so the timeframe is January of twenty-two, when you look, go look at it.
Okay, I'm a little in and in and out on it, the what happened, except that I feel like when we were at the joint meeting the other night, there was discussion about what the town administrator for the select board was gonna use KP's decision or accept their.
Yes, so they they adopted the guidance of town council, which stated that that the petitioners had not successfully proven that it was a public way, therefore, it's still considered a private way.
And so they've moved to rename it, which they seem to have wanted to do at the town meeting.
See, I would have argued that point, saying if it wasn't considered a public road, that piece of property should have been divided and put back to the parcels.
Yeah, clan.
Yeah.
When the county commissioner.
No, I know what you mean, I know what you mean, yeah.
The property came together.
It's it's a, yeah, it's a moot point, I just.
That's correct.
I'm just, I'm.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing or interest, I just, they're but they're benefiting from there being some sort of clearing down the middle of it.
Correct.
And.
But it's so narrow, it is not a standard.
No, it isn't right now, but I guess my question was, does it really mean that it has to be a subdivision? And I mean to speak ahead of all the different things that are involved, but, and maybe not to get um dick too concerned about it, but is, is are they just, is it as simple as they're claiming we're gonna fix everything and we're stuck with it? And I'm not saying for you to say anything, really, in a, in a way that will work. But is, is, is that your interpretation of it?
Well, my interpretation is with a town road, there's width, there's depth, it's built to a certain standard.
We have road standard, yeah.
And with a private way, my research, what I've done with mass general law is, there's no enforcement, it's a private way, they can build whatever they want, and you can't do a thing about it.
They could leave it as is.
They can leave it as is, and it's a private way, and anybody buys a house now, as long as it's accessible for emergency and safety, it could be a private way, and you buy, you put, build your house on a piece of property that uh, yeah. Cuz I I tried finding out if there was any mass general law associated with private ways, and unless there was a bylaw or an ordinance put in place, it was basically almost, there's no rules for private ways.
So now, the select board has decided it is a private way.
So they didn't decide it, it technically, according to town council, was always a private way. And they did not feel that the petitioners were able to prove it was a public way, so they uh they adopted town council's guidance that it would remain private, um so the the property owners hired a private construction company at their own expense and improved the roadway. Um part of the requirements for getting a building permit was sign off from the police chief, uh the fire chief, and acknowledgement that they cannot get a CO until there is electricity from national grid. Um so in my, my last communications, um they have received sign off from the pu- uh the police chief and the fire chief for accessibility.
And so work has been done on on the road?
Yes, at the pri- at the private.
Way.
Correct, at by the private owner, at the private owner's expense, nothing's.
The whole length of it?
Not.
Okay.
That I can't confirm, I know there was work done down on the Princeton side, there was work done down on the Princeton side. I don't know for certain how far down the road went.
Who's paying for what and when, yeah.
That's all private, yeah, the town is not paying for that, the town is not.
Yeah, and I guess.
I I don't.
Yeah, okay.
Dude, my my whole presumption is this, is that when the planning board approved this, we didn't have the right information. And I would like another, i- if you wanna use the term bite at the apple. That's all I'm asking for.
I, you know, to be honest with you, my understanding, well, I had pulled up, pulled the file and gone through it briefly, but because this has not formally come before me, I have not delved into the depth of it. I did get an email saying that there was a name change, I'm aware of that. But, you know, so if you can just put in writing what it is that, you know, that that is all I'm asking, just so that I don't misinterpret your request. Cuz I think the clarity is extremely important when we're, when we're talking to town council, and that's.
Correct, Norm, you want me to write something up for that? Okay, I'll take care of it, I've got here right on Mile Way. Okay. Alright, but there's building permits already given, that 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 uh it's been improved and and the police and fire chief signed off on it, wow.
So, building permits have improved, and the frontage is only on the private way?
Yeah.
Yes, no?
I'm, I'm just shaking my head, just, just.
I guess this norm also requires a talk with Harold. Cuz I.
Maybe.
Yeah, alright. Again, I I, all I wanna do is the right thing, and I don't think we were given the right information at the time.
No, we weren't.
And now.
No, they were waiting to find out what they were gonna get.
Yeah, exactly, anyhow, enough said, well, let's get you the email, and let's, then we can go from there.
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Eric Nunn, I'll change the motion.
Was there any public comment, I guess, it seemed like, a lot of people still here.
I have one question, um would, this is in regards to the Arrowway, Arrowhead Way, I'm sorry, it's very late, my brain is not operating as it was at the beginning of this meeting, I'm sure you all can empathize with that. With the issues that's going on with Arrowhead Way and the stormwater issues with one forty and one forty-two, um would the town slash the board be willing to have another survey done with a engineering firm to look like another hydrologic study?
We'd have to eat that, right?
Yeah.
So we do have a question with town council to advise us on whether we can do that.
That's already out, very good, do we know when that question was posed?
So, I wanna say July seventeenth, but let me just double check, if you wanna have the date. So I emailed her on the fourteenth. Um and then followed up on the sixteenth, she did respond, I just need to provide her with some additional information.
Very good.
So but one of the questions that we did ask was can we, you know, would she advise that, so.
And that's with our town council?
Yes.
Is that KP that you folks keep referring to?
Yeah, that's the one that's hired by the select board um as the representative for the uh town of Rutland.
Very good, and what does KP stand for?
Copman and Page.
And where are they located?
Boston.
Boston, okay, thank you.
Copman and Page, yeah.
Yeah. Um. The only thing I I would have to think of is that uh to consider. An alternative hydrologic study. Would have to have some very specific reason to believe that there was that that there's some flaws in the original one.
You know, Norm, well, let's take it a step at a time, the first thing we need to do is hear from town council.
Yeah.
So I, you know.
But just.
I don't think we need to compound our problems right now.
Yeah, is there any? Any reason, Dilly, just to have Kevin take a quick relook at when he reviewed that hydrological study? Many moons ago, see if there's anything that jumps out at him?
I don't think he did.
Oh, that's right, because that was done, it was DCR, oh man, that's right, I forgot about that. DCR was involved in that, it wasn't, it wasn't our town uh engineer.
And or we just have to take their final say.
Their engineering staff's final say, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I completely forgot about that cuz I'm used to. Our hydrological stu- hydrological studies or our subdivisions go onto Kevin to be reviewed, then he gives us a report. That didn't happen with this one, it went to the uh state.
Does that mean that they're in? There, what's the term when you say that you're right all the time, but are they immune from? What we're what we're challenged with?
I don't know.
You know, do they feel that they're the final say or can we reengage them if they're supposedly the actors in this? You know, in some way, I guess. Well, we have some proof that there's weird water things going on, that's about it, you know, we've got some documentation and. I don't know.
I- instead of uh doing a an updated hydrological study, could, and I'm just putting this out to the board and Dilly too. Could we take the report that the DCR DEP came up with and have Kevin look it over and give us a a written report?
I don't know.
If we if we could gather from DCR.
Okay.
Right, that would be great, cuz I I did email DCR about. A plan and they told me they didn't have anything on record.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat that? I just wanna make sure that I understood that correctly.
Um let me just pull up the email, just to clarify.
What I heard was uh town requested the records and DCR said they have no records of the study? Because that's what I just heard, I just want to confirm, please.
So my question to him was, I was informed that DCR requested a plan, perhaps a stormwater management. For Bear Hill subdivision developed by Blair Development, does that sound correct? Um this is Alan Rantala. I didn't request any plans, I'm waiting to hear back from our staff at Wachusett Reservoir to see if they did. And I'll let you know.
Yeah, it should have been Wachusett.
Could we request that directly from Wachusett?
He says, I just heard back from Wachusett and they didn't request any plans either.
What date were those emails, please?
Oh, sorry, I just lost it cuz I touched the screen.
If they, I forget why.
Should Concom should have.
So this was.
It's not jurisdiction of the Concom.
His last email to me was on July ninth where he said he just heard back from Wachusett and they didn't request any plans either.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is nobody has any records that any hydrologic study was done on Arrowheadway, stormwater management?
I just wanna make a comment, I forgot the address um at the last meeting, the house on top of Arrowheadway. They lost their fence and they lost like seven to ten feet of ledge um that they've been trying to repair, so. And with the last rainstorm, that was five minutes long, we had tons of water coming down still. I don't know, I'm just getting frustrated, I'm sorry. It's just circles and circles.
Keep videotaping it, you know.
That's what we're doing.
So there's no study on file anywhere that we can find?
I I ju- ju- before you take that approach, um this is the state of Massachusetts. I would verify and check cuz one person may, the 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 rate, again, this is my opinion. The rate of turnover of employees in this state doesn't mean the knowledge is or the fi- is there, it just means maybe the knowledge. Of not knowing where to get it is possibly not there. So before we make any assumptions, I would double check and verify that there's never been, and I don't remember the date, was that in the? Covid period of the, no, that was before that, um so it was twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, somewhere in that range, I think is when that. That subdivision, it might even be before that, I'd have to look at the drawings to see.
Yeah, what the date is.
Yeah, so I agree, that's an email back, it's an official email. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't uh put my dollars on that until I checked and verified that's correct.
I'm not asking for a response from the board tonight, but I would like for you gentlemen to consider if there is no study found. If the town would be willing to conduct one.
Okay.
And I do not, I'm not asking for an answer, but just something for you gentlemen to please keep bear in mind.
I I I think, D, what we need to do is talk with Kevin because he seemed really.
Well, he he would, he would know channels.
Yes, that's what I'm getting at, I'm trying to get us better intel and information that maybe Kevin could help us with. That that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I think that would be a good. Because he was, he, I mean, he focused right in, this is the procedure that happened when he was here.
The the thing is, they did such an extensive stormwater plan. For for the whole of Bear Hill, y- you know, what I mean, a thousand foot swale, a detention pond, a five hundred foot infiltrator.
Yeah.
Uh and all that, and.
Yeah, I can't believe there's no study.
Planning Board Office, a role of the plans of that whole system.
Yeah.
What I mean, it's a role like this.
Yeah.
They don't come up with those plans without having first done.
Study.
Study.
Yeah, because they need to know what they need to put in for water.
Can't do it.
Infiltrators.
There is a hydrologic study, there has to be.
Yeah.
It's a question of.
No engineer would make it up.
Where in the archives of DCR might it be?
Well, Kevin's gonna be our best hope for finding, yeah.
Yeah.
And you're saying Concom has nothing to do?
It's not jurisdictional, there's no wetlands up there.
I was personally.
But it's Concom, i- i- and the and your infiltrator for, that is up to Concom, that was dumped into their lap. So they should have information. On all all that stormwater where the drainage is going into it.
I guess it wouldn't be hurt to ask Melissa.
Yeah.
If she has any any files.
We already looked.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Hang on if you if you guys. If you want me to comment.
Oh, yes, we can't, I apologize, we can't see you, we don't know who's on the.
No noise. Uh so for Arrowheadway, we would have no files because there was not a single lot that required a notice of intent or order of conditions. Um therefore, we would have never had oversight of the stormwater management report. Only if we were to have jurisdiction over a lot, would then we look into a stormwater report. So other sections of Bear Hill, yes, we may have Arrowhead way specifically, we have no files on.
What about?
There was never any applications.
Way.
Mel- Melissa, what about the uh um houses on Britanelle and Palmagussit?
I think we have, so it's tr- it's tricky sometimes because some of the lots, if I am understanding correctly on. Britanelle are A and R lots, I think, um so the ones that were A and Rs. Unless um you know, you, it's it gets tricky with the common development, so you have to have three or more. Um that require a notice of intent to then require the stormwater management standards. Um so some probably weren't part of an overall. Design that we would have saw seen, we might have just seen a house or two.
Yeah.
Um I can double check if, I think I'm just, I always get confused on the numbers and which phases are what and all this these subdivisions. Um I I think we have some for like the Grizzly side um and up there, but towards the Arrowhead. Um way, we don't have anything.
Okay, cuz those, all those A and Rs were part of the uh Bear Hill two subdivision.
Okay.
And I I say two because it was different than the standard Bear Hill, that was Bear Hill two if I remember right, Norm.
Yeah.
So and they were just broken out because they didn't have to be part of Arrowheadways. Frontage, they could use, they could use Palmagussit and Britanelle as frontage, but they were still part of the Bear Hill two subdivision, I don't know how that plays out with you guys. That's beyond my s- my knowledge base, but. I thought I'd throw that out, that they were part of Bear Hill two at the time, they were just A and R'd because they had frontage on uh public roads.
Because of the bridge down there, the houses on either side of them and everything else, that was part of. What I thought Concom was involved in is in there.
Yeah, that was that was Bear Hill, that wasn't Bear Hill two.
I know, it's Bear Hill, but that's all, I thought that was part of the stormwater.
Oh, you mean from the state?
Yeah.
I don't know, I I don't remember.
If it was two phases, theoretically, if they got permitted at different times, then they probably have two different stormwater. Management systems.
Yeah, we we just, Melissa, I think we really need Kevin Quinn's help because. His knowledge and and going back, working with Carl Holgren on this. I- i- is gonna be our reference and our, if you wanna call it archive.
Yeah.
Of what happened. And and without that, we're sort of dead in the water to A, find where that report is and B, who to talk to. Cuz obviously, Dilly, who you sent to, they just said no. A- a- and again, maybe they don't know where to go to look, that's a possibility, cuz I've I've run into that the privacy industry, we've had so much turnover. That I go asking for a drawing, nobody knows where it is and I find it, so I I'd really like to get Kevin's help on this.
And it's strange too, because I can remember walking around with the DCR person down there. In that bridge area, out to the water. And uh. Again, it doesn't, that's a long time ago.
Delia, do you think Alan was asking if you, if they had requested a plan? Uh in recent history or if that was more historical, did you specify that?
No, I didn't specify, I just.
Almost when you read it, it almost sounds like he was checking to see if someone had requested it like, you know, the last couple of weeks.
No, there was no timeline, it was just a general, it was just a blanket request, no timeline, mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Cuz that might be part of what he was thinking, uh. But also, you know, you guys do have the subdivision approval, so you still have some authority in terms of. You know, DCR is a separate approval that they need to get, so. Don't feel like you're strapped to, you know, what DCR says all the time either.
I think to uh to try and answer the the question that was asked uh originally. Uh I I think it's kinda obvious that using Kevin Quinn's analogy from last uh last meeting. About the person building the house above you, uh are you now responsi- are they now responsible for the water that has always been coming on your property? Um you know, I I think it's very obvious when you go up there that all those, all those lots that he created. Slow towards the back and all of that water runs through the property because there's no grass, there's no vegetation. Uh I mean, he sells the lots with hydro seed and and they're not on, they don't have sprinklers. Uh so none of that took, it all runs down and then creams down that hill towards where he built other houses. Uh I can commit, I can't speak for the board, but I can commit to to as a. You know, elected official, as a member of this town, uh trying to help you guys get to the bottom of it because I I do believe. That it shouldn't be on you when a developer built above you and then built the house at the bottom. And now doesn't wanna take responsibility for all the damage that's caused throughout that process. Um so that would be what I would say to that.
Anything else?
I I have a question, if you don't mind, um and please forgive me if this is not the right question to ask.
Yes, name and address real quick so we can get it on the record.
Sure, my name is uh Tom, I'm located at forty seven Woodside.
Hmm.
Um I was, my question is, is the developer or the engineer. Is planning on addressing any of the water issues um that the properties are expen- are experiencing? In that development that was built some years ago.
Okay, ju- ju- just for a quick reference and I'd like to. To try to locate where where your problem is, this is something we got a, just had a series of pictures uh sent to us.
Thank you.
Uh about basically kind of the same thing happening.
Yeah, well, you and I looked at it.
Lemon, and wh- where are, where exactly are you located on Bryce Lemon?
On Woodside, where you?
On Woodside.
Forty forty seven, we're about three houses down from where they're putting the bridge in, um almost on the corner of Oakley, right there.
Okay, so it's all, it's all the way, almost all the way.
That cul-de-sac comes out and. To the, if you're at the cul-de-sac, to the right is where they're putting in the new road.
Yes.
Bridge.
Whereabouts from that cul-de-sac, if I'm looking out from the cul-de-sac, are you talking at your houses?
Third house down.
Third house down.
So um so number four Oakley is behind uh my house. And um there's um.
Is that the one where they put the the riprap behind the house so it would come down between the two houses out to the water?
That's the property next to me.
Next to you, okay.
Yeah.
Now I've got it, Norm, what we're talking about.
The property next to me, um cuz I've been talking to the neighbors.
And that was the solution for the water because that water was coming down that property, then going down three or four properties farther down.
It is, but my understanding of it didn't fix it.
It didn't fix it?
That's my understanding, but I'm not, I'm I'm.
You worried about your property, yeah?
Um don't don't get me wrong, I'm worried about everybody's property, right?
I get it, yeah.
Kind of visually been seeing what's going on on the roads and um. And the other houses that he's putting in, the the builders putting in and um. I've had a conversation, uh multiple conversations with the builder, um I reached out to the engineer. Um and I also include your team on the email, which. I I do wanna say that you, um the town has been very responsive and I thank you for that. I I really appreciate that, I was on the phone with you a few times today. Um I am concerned with the water cuz the water is coming from the center of the hill. I am concerned that um they, I can't get any information about drainage. What size piping is, is there any drainage in the hill?
Um or along the driveway, cuz I've noticed the water's coming off the driveway and down the hill from just what I saw in the pictures.
And um I'll be honest with you, it's a point where. I'm not sure that I can take that on myself and I'm not really sure, I'm kind of looking for input, that's why I reached out to the builder. Um reaching out to the engineer and I'm just, I guess I'm just asking for some ideas and some help. It is concerning, um uh my propane tank is filling up with water. Um and I am concerned about the neighbors, right, the neighbor behind me, they have a uh a driveway. With um some pressure treated boards as a barrier. Um and the water's coming out of the middle of the hill, so that's concerning to me, they're driving up and down that driveway now. I just kinda want someone to kinda say, no, it's okay, we gotta do this to fix it, we gotta do that to fix it. I just kinda want someone to kinda say, no, it's okay, we gotta do this to fix it, we gotta do that to fix it. When I was on the phone with the builder, um I did ask what they're using for erosion control. And uh he had informed me uh using tree brines and that's when I asked him, you know, with all due respect, I um. You know, I talked to him, we had some conversations. And I'm interested on how they design that hill for the erosion control. Because the way it looks to me, and I'm not an engineer. But it's either failing or there isn't proper drainage in that. And I gotta be honest with you, I'm not really sure how to fix it. And um I'm not really sure which way to go to fix it. Um cuz it is, it um it is eroding and every time it rains, it's getting worse. You know, I I built a, I built a new shed in the property and um it's a great neighborhood and this is a great town. And the shed in the back is now filling with water.
I saw you had the gravel around the outside of the shed.
Yeah, and I I did, and thank you for looking at that, I appreciate that, I did, I put um five yards of stone out there. And then about a week, it washed away, all the dirt laying on top of it. So I'm more looking for some ideas, some help, some support. As well as the safety of the property above me. Just listening to my neighbors, um their experience in the same thing. And and I did say on the phone, you know, to the builder and I said, you know, I'm just looking for your advice, you built a property. You know, and and I kinda stressed to him that. He's not just building houses, he's building neighborhoods. And I listened to last week's meeting. And I listened to a few comments and um. I kind of see what's going on from looking at the way, looking at the bu- houses that he's building. On Lindsay Lane right now, and 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 I made this comment to him, and he's putting a house up in, you know, in two months, and I congratulate him for that. But I also said to him that he should make sure that the drainage is proper. And and take a little bit more time into the yards, because it is. Challenging to build where he is building, right? We're all got hills over there and. But I do think that the erosion control. Has to be um better stabilized.
Is that, I got one question for you, and I saw you interrupt. Is that water that's coming off that hill, and obviously I saw your driveway there, is it going down your driveway and out onto the road?
It is.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out, okay, thanks.
And and I gotta be honest with you, the the um concerning part to me is it's coming out of the middle of the hill too. You know, I mean, you look at it, if it's coming out the top of the hill, alright, well, maybe, you know, you you dig it out, put some stone in there. It's coming out of the middle of the hill and and the hill's pretty high. So um, you know, I guess I'm just reaching out to anybody that can help me out and um. And I've asked for some drawings, I've asked for some drainage. Drawing, drawings, and what they use for erosion control, did they use blankets, did they use, you know, did they stake it, what size pipe? Um I did, the builder did inform me that he believes that there's a four inch pipe at the bottom, I said, okay, well, how deep is it? How long is it, where does it tie in, do you have any D boxes, you know, those are some of the answers, I guess I'm looking for.
Did did he give you any information, and again, I know this is outside the planning board, I'm just, it's my engineering background. Did he give you any information about the drainage along the driveway that's going down from the house to the bottom of the? Cuz you know the driveway slopes, obviously. Did he give you any information on that? Well, what I'm guessing is, I'm giving you what you should ask.
No, and a hundred percent I did ask. And he believes that the four inch pipe, if it's a four inch pipe. It turns and it goes out to the street. And I had asked him, do we have a drawing, do we have any asbills? Where does it turn, what's the angle it turns at, like, I kinda, I'm kinda looking for some answers, so I know. If, you know, if the, he comes up and says, well, you're on your own, you have to fix it, okay, well, what's in the hell?
You need to ask the question too, is the pipe perfor- perforated? Cuz right now, what, again, this is just me, I'm not representing the planning board, just me as an engineer.
Absolutely, hundred percent.
If it's perforated pipe and it's down sixteen inches and water's coming out of it, that could be possibly the problem of the water coming out the center. And I say possible, I'm not a civil engineer.
Sure, and. He believes that it is. He believes, he believes that it is. But I don't, I don't know that. And I I don't know that he's a hundred percent sure, because he's building a lot of houses, he's, you know, he's putting a house up and I watched that whole cul- cul-de-sac go up. There's about eight houses over there, and they're and they're taking some water and. As I was working, they had, they had conversations with me and I said, you know. I'm not an engineer or anything, I said, but your house is brand new, we gotta get some veg, you gotta get some vegetation in, and I was trying to. You know, just trying to, you know, calm down a little bit and have conversations. So I'm really not sure, to be honest with you, which way to go, I I gotta be honest with you, I don't like propane. And to have water in my propane tank is at the top of it. Is uh is very concerning to me and um there's no really way to get rid of the. Water in the yard and the water coming out of the hill, other than putting the proper drainage system in. And I'm not even sure what that's gonna cost.
Being a gas engineer, there's, water's not inside your propane tank, it's in the top of the crown.
At the top of the crown, at the cover.
Yeah, yeah, so there's no, because the propane's pressurized beyond atmospheric, won't get inside. But you could bring it up to the builder that your concern is the winter when it freezes.
And I have, I I brought up, I've had a few conversations with the builder, um with with both the brothers. And again, you know. He said he was going to come by. Um this was about a month and a half ago, he was gonna come by in a week or two. And um I'm happy to meet him. And I'm happy to go through with him. Or anybody that is um. Help me out, or give me some ideas.
Welcome to our struggles, this is an ongoing issue we've been bringing up over and over, keep coming to the meetings, we're all going through this.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for you too.
Something's not right here. Something's not right.
Here's another example of another development that this builder is doing. Where we are experiencing not just a house, these are our homes, these are our neighborhoods. Something's not right.
And that's why I'm concerned with having Quinn come back and look, because Quinn.
I don't think he did the original engineering.
No.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where we can fit in as a board yet, I I don't have that experience, I think that's. Uh been gone over, but I I think that as a board, we need to stand up for these residents. That have put down their life savings on a home from this builder. Who does not stand behind his products and then keeps coming to us for more approvals. We need to start finding ways to say no, because everyone I have spoken to in this town. Has had issues with this developer, has not had a good thing to say about it, and yet we keep working with them. I I don't understand how we can't say no. How we can't break this cycle, because there is a pattern of behavior here. Where he does not deliver a good product to our citizens, and then they end up paying for it down the line. If this was somebody coming to look for a loan, you would deny them every single time. And I understand that he has had these approvals and all of that, but we need to figure out what we can do. Because our citizens are getting trampled by this individual.
I don't have anything to say.
You know, the cutting fills that he does.
Let's create a uh executive committee meeting. I see. I'm beginning to think we should get our engineer in and have a little discussion with him.
I I just, the the problem with Kevin's gonna say, and again, I'm 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 pleased, I'm not. Not besieging any of your problems, is I don't know how far we can go. Cuz I think Kevin's gonna tell us all, like he said the last meeting, this is civil. And we don't, all we can do is put pressure on the builder, and I have no problem doing that, I really do.
See you in court.
He said that with explicitives, the F U C K word, on public record, that you were there, I was there, you both were there. He has made it clear, he does not give a crap about any of us. And I don't know what the board can do, but you guys keep giving the stamp of approval over and over. You, all four of you are part of the bylaws committee, you have the power to change the laws in our town, I am begging you. Like us concerned citizens, we're coming, please help protect our town, because this is not okay, what is happening, please.
That's, that's why, that's why priority number one is this site plan review. That we, that Worcester put in place, that I don't think any other surrounding town has, so we'll be the first.
There there probably are.
I wish not to, there are others.
There are others around here, who, Holden?
Paxton.
Paxton has it, Holden has it? For curiosity.
Question, who is this Kevin you keep referring to?
Ki- Kevin Quinn.
Kevin Quinn, he's our, he's a town engineer, I apologize.
Kevin is not the towns engineer, he's not an employee of the town, there's been a little confusion, he's hired as a third party engineer.
He's a town representative engineer. He represents the town.
There's no contract.
Unofficially.
Unofficially, I just wanna clarify that, he's not the towns engineer, there is no contract.
No, it came up several years ago and it died, and I don't know what happened.
Oh, I thought, okay.
So there's no formal contract.
So we just use him? Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks, sorry, I did not.
I have a follow up question on all of this, because we've been asked to accept roads from Woodside Drive, which. Then falls on us to fix if they're flooding and out or washing away. So is anyone checking when, when they're coming to us and asking us to accept the roadways, are we checking to make sure that they're in good working order?
Yes.
That has to happen.
As a matter of fact, earlier in this meeting, uh we had reports on several of the roads. From Kevin Quinn outlining, you know, and that, he has done a full inspection, and he has noted each item that he feels needs to be addressed. And then we we give, you know, a certain period of time, and he goes back out there and he marks. Yes, this was addressed, no, this wasn't, yes, it was, no, it wasn't, uh or whatever.
And if that doesn't get done before the warrant closes. I I think to make you, they they leave a, what's the word I'm looking for, placeholder? Possibly.
Yeah, so they, they they put a placeholder and they would usually recommend no action at town meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
The only risk you take with that is a motion could be made on the floor to approve it, and it could still technically be approved if it's on the warrant.
So the idea is not to put it on the warrant at all?
Correct, yeah, because and especially where there's ongoing issues, because if they might look good today. But it's, the water is gonna continue to erode, then we're accepting roads that we know are potentially hazardous or going to have issues down the road. Yeah, and we did, good clarification for town council.
I'd like to find out a little bit more what. Either Kevin or somebody else, or you know, about what he's saying here, you know, coming out of the middle of the hill?
Yeah, it is, I can see it right here, I saw that, when I looked at this drawing, I'm going like. How the hell's the water coming down off the driveway and not taking all of the uh. Uh uh all the bark mulch with it, and then I'm like, it's, the water is is coming out of the center of the hill and coming down. The, and and I've never seen that before, so my only thought process is there, again, this is just me thinking, there's a perforated pipe in there somewhere. And the water's coming out of that perforated pipe at a high velocity and and going, and basically soaking that uh. Dirt there, and then eventually coming out.
Yeah, to your point, is I was wondering, and and I have asked this um to the builder too, is if we had drawings on that. Because to your point, if it is a perforated pipe, and maybe it's broken, maybe it's separated. And I'm not looking to talk bad about anybody, right, I I wanna try to solve the issue. And figure out, let's let's put all our heads together and figure out how we fix the water issues, and we can move on, right? Um everybody wants playing the yard, everybody wants everybody safe, right, I don't want. Anything happening to that driveway above me, because where is the driveway gonna go, where are the cars gonna go, it's gonna go in my backyard. Right, and the people gonna get hurt, so if we had some asbills, if we had some drawings, and maybe it is as simple as that. Hey, maybe the pipe separated, maybe the pipe got crushed, maybe it's not down deep enough. Or it froze, or froze dead, it froze and expanded and cracked. But I, I'm not. Not really getting that information, and I don't know how to get it.
I don't know. I don't suppose we'd be lucky enough that in the application for the building permit, they would show any drainage.
I would probably, my first start, if I were you, instead of the uh to circle around. Is talk to Harold, our building inspector, and have him pull the. Building plan design for the house above you.
Okay.
And my, I I again, I I'm shooting from the hip here.
Yeah, any, I'm looking for any suggestions at all, any help I can get, because um, and see if he put the, he put, cuz there's a whole house drainage. And then if I remember right, there was drainage down that driveway too, that went out to the cul-de-sac. So if there's any drawings as part of the um. What's that, Norm, the building permit phase where they do the layout? That were, that's where it would be, but again, I I I'm shooting from the hip, I don't know if that is, if they got into that detail.
But it's a place to try.
It's worth anything.
It could be the gutters, or typically, if like most people in in Massachusetts, they have a basement, they've got a whole house perimeter drain that goes around the basement. Cuz we don't have sump pumps here in Mass, that goes out to uh someplace, the side of the house or. Could go into that, go into that drain that goes down the driveway, I mean, that's a possibility, but again, I don't wanna say that cuz I don't know.
He does something strange with that.
Yeah, he does a basement drain, and that's what I had, I had a conversation with him about, cuz he told me he spends extra money on a basement drainage. And I said, okay, where does it go, he says, well, it goes out to the street, and I said, okay, where does it go from there, from retention pond, okay. I said, well, how about the drain, that's when I started getting into the, well, the drainage in the backyard, let's talk about that, right? And I guess I'm just looking for him to come by, right, and this is what I said on the phone, I said. Let's walk through it, let's talk about it together, come by, maybe take your engineer, maybe we'll talk to some of the neighbors. That are having somewhat of the same issue and I'm just kinda looking, walking around and and listening, but. If you can't stop the water from the hill. You're never gonna be able to stop it from coming to the street, and it's always gonna go to the neighbor's yard, it's gonna end up in somebody else's yard. Because the house is so close.
But that's, that street is accepted in town, correct?
Which street?
Woodside.
Woodside is accepted.
Coming in from Charnock Hill.
That portion.
Yeah, that portion, the portion from one twenty two A is what's up for discussion right now. For this coming up, Woodside, Arrowhead, and what's the other one, Delia, um Pine Pine Hill, yeah. But that's not, you live on the other side, it's already been accepted.
Yeah, he's putting the bridge in now, he's working on putting the bridge in now, and and you know, and that's what I said, I said, if you're up there looking at it. And and give me a call, let's meet up, and let's go in the backyard and talk about it.
Best of luck.
I don't know what to do, like, at this point, I mean, I don't, I, I don't know what to do, so, yeah, can you make?
To him, uh what does your H O A have to say about this?
Well, so that's another thing, I really don't know a lot about that, and we're not paying in into that right now, so I don't know. I don't know what all that means yet, but I'm I'm trying to get educated, I'm trying to learn about all that stuff.
See if you can find out who the H O A president is of of.
Did Clea turn it over to, you know, a chair or something like that, or is he still the chair?
He's still the chair.
He still is.
My understanding is from hearing from the neighbors, he is still.
Yeah, sure he is.
The chair of that.
Then there's some questions.
I'm not a hundred percent sure though, I'm only listening.
The only reason I say this, Norm, is it's not, when it goes out there, it's a cold, cold Chris problem.
It is now.
I mean.
Accepting roads piecemeal, the whole development should be finished. Before we're accepting roads, that's a clear example of why we shouldn't be doing a piecemeal, and I've been railing about this for years. Because it's been happening for years.
Uh you did doing that, you, you gotta leave it.
Yeah, snow plowing, will it get done, probably not.
Yeah.
That's why it's.
That's why we try to accept it as soon, as soon as they're completed and ready to go.
Yeah.
Because that, that gives you access to the public services as opposed to the builder services.
But, I mean, is that really a viable excuse because isn't the developer responsible for handling plowing until?
The developer also has the right to apply for the, the road to be accepted.
Right, but she's, what she's saying is that she's proposing that we change that, so.
Wow, okay.
Ben Johnson was writing that, um, the road acceptance policy, oh, sorry.
Keep it on the developer to, to do that. I know John also introduced developing from, in phases from the back out so that you're not constantly running. Heavy equipment over roads that you just accepted at the beginning, cause they like to build. From the front back so that their construction equipment can drive over those roads and start making their way. But either going from the back out and approving from the back out so that you're not continuing all that heavy equipment. Or even ideally, like Dealey was saying and, and like we just heard. Waiting until the entire thing's over, we've had so many issues. Uh, just that I've heard about in the year and a half that I've been here, ones that have been accepted that are now requiring tons of maintenance. The, you know, the, the pattern of behavior is clear and I, I think we need to pay attention to it.
And even if just the administrative. Aspect of just accepting a tiny portion of the road bit by bit, does that make sense to the board? To be going through this process for. A couple of feet, you know, every, I'm asking, I'm asking.
Well, it's what, what he's, what the roads that we've accepted are, are the phased portions of the subdivision. We're not accepting pieces of the phase, it's the whole phase.
You are, because Arrowhead is accepted in portions, uh, cause I just checked. There's a portion of Arrowhead, according to Kevin's reports, that's been accepted. My understanding is in twenty eighteen. So now he is asking for another portion of Arrowhead to be accepted.
The rest of it.
Well, the portion that was accepted by Arrowhead, wasn't that part of the entrance into Arrowhead?
Yes, it was.
That there were houses built on it that had.
Two lots.
Two lots.
Yeah.
And the, yeah, okay.
Just notice. And add, when John was writing the road acceptance policy, he did reach out to town council to ask if we are legally obligated to accept a road. And even if it is at the subdivision town standards for acceptance, we are not obligated to accept any road as a town road.
You don't have to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and.
If the planning board.
Then it becomes a private way, right, wouldn't it?
It's, it would remain private.
Those homeowners will have to pay, right, at some point if it's goes private, so. You're talking an entire subdivision, all those families have to pay for professional plowing for the road.
Wouldn't it remain the builders?
Builders.
Why would it be turned pri- private, because you guys approved public, correct?
We refuse to accept it, he doesn't have to own it forever.
I mean, legitimately, he, he does, but he could walk away and then it's whoever owns the house has got sue. See, it goes, it goes back to, it goes back to civil court.
Ways over there.
So would it be appropriate for the bylaws committee to make a law so that he's, so that a builder's not allowed to do that? If we're identifying an issue and saying, what can we do to fix the problem, these are things that I'm looking to the committee. The board to think about, because you guys have the power. To do things, to make change, and we are asking you to protect our homes and protect Rutland. And I'm not looking for an answer, it's just something that I wanna reiterate over and over again.
You'd have to start a new practice of not accepting pieces, that's, it's as simple as that.
The longer you're accepting liability, the town is accepting all his faults and also is on Rutland.
And just to add to that, if we take, if we follow the whole street acceptance policy up until town meeting, we still, we put in. You know, all that time. Hearings and all of that, so.
They're all at once, it'd make, it would seem more efficient.
You know, it's a side comment I'll make in sort of, but. Like Norm had said, even the last meeting, say, and Kevin approves literally the road, the road's perfect. Let's just say, I know a lot of them don't seem that way. If we do accept it, it grandfathers in all the construction around it. And then no one gets, when you get your yard spilling into it, if, if the road. Doesn't get accepted to a degree until the subdivision's finished, we can have him correct things.
Not on private property unless it, unless the water goes into the road.
Yeah, okay.
If it goes into the road, then it, then it falls into our jurisdiction, if it's just flooding private property. Like Kevin said, we, we can assist, we can suggest, but we have no authority.
So it's, you know, we. There's a reason to try to get a road accepted, you know, if we wanna just say, and I think there was that conversation where it was like, well. We should just not accept roads from now on. Um, whether anyone agreed to it, I'm not sure, um, the full discussion of it, but to get it, the question you had is. You know, where do you? Do you just not accept roads from now on?
I wasn't saying to not accept roads, I said, don't accept them until the whole development is finished and you know that everything is working correctly. We, we've got Woodside Drive that's now flooding out and we're gonna have to pay to, to do that, where we've got Charnak Hill also running out, like we. Half of the width of our road is crushed stone on, or big rocks on either side. Because we can't afford to, to repair the roads that we have.
Do you live on that road?
I live on Charnak Hill Road.
You live on Charnak, not Woodside?
Not Woodside, but I'm saying it's all going downhill and guess where I live, I live down the hill.
And it's going into your.
No, it's not going into my property, but my point is, Charnak Hill Road has been there for a long time. And we can't afford to fix Charnak Hill Road, it, it has washed out. It washed out a couple of months ago with the big rains and it's continuing to wash out and there's just rocks there. Sasawana has been washed out all summer, it's impassable, we can't fix and we can't keep up with the roads we already have. Why are we accepting new roads that are washing out as we're accepting them? It doesn't make sense, that's my point, is if, if, if we're not doing things correctly when we're building. And it's causing more, more runoff, something's gotta give, a lot of that water came down from the wood side, like. You can see where it starts eroding and it started eroding from the wood side and. I've got a great video of it that is quite clear where it's coming from.
Like I was saying, if you don't accept it and it is, or Tim said, if it spills into the road, then you can get the builder to work on it. If it doesn't, you know, it's a private issue. You know, he's building on very difficult land, I think is what you guys have talked about. It's extremely difficult land to build on, he's. Uh, learning how to build on it, it sounds like.
So do we need tighter regulations?
Great at it, so.
That's why we're talking about it.
You got, when, when it comes to building houses, we don't have control over that, it's a state and it's Harold. Harold handles the interpretation of building of houses and building codes, it's not the planning board.
If I may, I sat down with, um, building inspector Harold and he only is, his pervy was only for the house itself. It is not for the land around it or the drainage, so our building inspector has nothing to do with, with, that is out of his scope.
Yep.
I would say there was a comment about, maybe Tim made it, if it's pass, if you got a big hill in your backyard and you do. If it's further than ten feet from the edge of your house. It's not in the building code or it doesn't apply to building code, but that hill looks like it's within ten feet. If you can somehow confirm that. There's, you have more leverage on how well that hill was engineered, is that true or not true?
I don't think so.
Fell within a certain footage.
Again, now just start talking, cause I talked also, obviously, with Harold about this. And, you know, and I was, I was really kinda surprised because, at least I would have thought that someone applies for a building permit. His first action would be to go out and, and look at the site. He can't do that.
So who does?
He can't.
No one does?
No one, no. His first inspection is when the foundation is put in.
Yeah.
You know, uh, so. Ba- basically, basically, there, there is, it appears. Very nearly zero oversight on grading of house lots. Whether it's in the subdivision or whether it's an individual lot. Or whatever.
Do we know if any other municipalities, towns or whatnot around us have any?
What we are looking for.
That's part of the.
That's a site review, I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand.
We're, we're looking at this point. Uh, I, you know, I'd love, I'd love to make a promise, this is, you know, hey, we're gonna be able to put a bylaw in place that is going to. Prevent every single one of these problems from happening, I can't do that. Okay, we're, we're still, we're looking, we think we have some good places to look that could. Probably have some good conditions that have some teeth in them. Maybe, maybe. Stay tuned, that's all I can say.
Paxton has something in place?
Stay tuned.
Yes.
I'll take whatever you can get.
Think the people that are coming in town ought to be advised, if you've got anything more than a ten percent pitch around you, be careful. Yeah, I was gonna say, yes.
So if I'm, if I may ask, um. When the, when the developer says that the town approved the drainage system. Is that your team that goes out and approves the drainage system and how it's being drained and. I'm not really sure what that means when he says that.
Well, in most cases, yes. We, we have one glaring exception, uh, and, and that is Bear Hill, Bear Hill subdivision. Where, uh, we had no part in evaluating or designing the drainage system. Okay, it was left, it was left to D C R.
Norm, clarify that, the drainage system for the road. The drainage system for the houses.
For the back.
Yeah, he's concerned about his, a comment made about his house.
So, so the, so the back of the hill and like the drainage in the yard, right? Um, we know he's working on challenging slopes.
Clarify that.
Right, so we know he's working on challenging slopes, right? And when he says the town approved the drainage, huh?
Not, not, not.
So what does that?
Not that, the, the, the only drainage would be the drainage within the right of way of the road, the catch base.
That's Tom, I wanted to clarify that.
Well, no, thank you for that, I appreciate that, cause I'm, I'm kinda learning at, in, in your town as, as I go along and. And that's why I like to talk to different people and, and, you know, try to reach out to the builder because he built. The house, he built a lot, he built the hill in the back, right?
Yeah.
So is there, other than reaching out to the building department and trying to meet up with the builder and maybe putting some coffee on for him? Is there another way of finding out what's in the hill without getting an excavator?
I'm struggling to what you just said.
I don't believe so.
I, I gotta ask Harold myself, cause I did not.
Struggling with that question, like, I don't.
Cause I thought.
The, the, the other thing I, I would say is, uh. Don't expect a quick response from Mister Blair. You know, he'll, he'll say, oh, yeah, yeah, let's meet, yeah, I'll come over, yeah, I will, uh. May, 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 maybe if you contact him ten times, you'll finally get him to come.
I, I was gonna say, the one thing I've learned in, in my career. Why I'm a pain in the ass as an engineer is, I am, I will not give up until I get the answer I wanna hear or the, or getting the solution, so. I'm persistent as hell, I won't give up, so, um.
But you mentioned.
My colleagues know that at work now too, so.
You mentioned there's photos of the water hitting the roadway, so do we?
Yeah, Tom sent the, this photo of the water going down the driveway out to the road.
Does it allow for us to give him a helping hand?
We don't, the road's accepted, it's, Chris, Chris has to get involved now.
Well, the thing is, even if it's going, hey, a- a- any, any driveway that slopes downward onto a roadway.
There's water coming out, yeah.
Water coming out, as long as it is collected by the roadway drainage system.
It doesn't overflow it, yeah.
That, that's, that's, that's all it is.
Just wanna add, I was looking at the video, um, when the water's coming, it's coming over the hill and. He was stating it was coming out of the middle, there are a couple spaces on our hill where it's coming out of the middle as well. It's actually not collecting and flooding the road.
And that's, wow.
I just wanted to add that, cause I never really.
I, I, I live on, you know, I live on the other side of the hill, that same hill. Okay, and, and I've, I've done some excavating or whatever on my own there and. To me is the, the soil conditions are really kinda strange. Because I do notice, for example, particularly in the springtime when frost is coming out of the ground. Water literally seeps, seeps out of the middle of a vertical trench.
Wow.
You, you can take a vertical slice into the ground and the water will literally pour come rain.
All the people that aren't on town water has artesian wells. How many got a true artesian well where the water's coming out of the pipe?
No, no.
There's nobody around here at all like that?
I'll, actually, my next door neighbor. Uh, he put a well in, he got down about a hundred and eighty feet, they had to cap it.
Cap it.
I had to go down five hundred feet, I'm only two hundred feet away.
That you'll find, because it'll push up springs all over the place. And all the odds, it's also can be, you know. It's already created a pathway for its water, so extra water might be coming in there also and, and who knows?
I, I gotta ask you, since you're down there, is, and this is just information, nothing I can do about. There, there is a, um, swale and riprap. Behind that hill that's one house down from you. Are those, are they, are they getting their backyards flooded too with water all the way down? Okay, thanks, just out curiosity.
Yeah, I, I, um, when it rains, I try to go and kind of assess. And just kinda walk down the street, whether it's in the rain or not, because I'm, again, I'm trying to figure out. And not just for myself, but for the neighbors, like, what do we do with the water, right? And that's why I'm trying to educate myself on, on the drainage and, and not just my property, but above it. Because if you had a hill, the, the water starts there and it comes down and it's gonna go to the next one, it's gonna go to the next one.
Yeah.
So if I could stop it, it's from my end, or if we could stop it from the top. It's going to help from the people or my neighbor's house, it's gonna help from going down to the road. You, it could go, there is a driveway that dips down almost across the street from me, it could, he could be getting in his garage. He or she, um.
Yeah.
So I'm kinda looking at it holistically and trying to figure out, um, that's why. I was hoping to get some, uh, ads built and some idea on the drainage.
I, I'm just fearful of what I heard and I, again, I'm not a building inspector nor I know that, but. My, yeah, I don't know, I, I don't have answers, cause my. Again, this is my house that was built in ninety-six. I had all the layouts when I got the drawings from the inspector showing all the whole house drains. And then the board of health had my septic system laid out, so with those two, I knew where all my pipes were. On my property, but again, that was ninety-six or ninety-seven, so it's a while back and mine was built by Elbag and Soucy. Back in the day, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Jim Soucy and Mark Elbag Senior, not Junior, built my, my house.
Norm.
Yeah.
Bryce Lemon, when did it first come aboard, come up? How far back?
Two thousand six.
Yeah, wasn't earlier than that? That was the first revision?
Uh, yeah, I, I think, I think that's, I think two thousand.
Before, yeah.
It was just Bryce Estate.
It was Bryce Estate, yeah. And, uh, what I was getting at is the fact that I was, I, I was on concom at the time and planning board and, uh. I had a walk through this down there with D C R. Steve Drawbridge was his name at the time and Steve says, Dick, I'm supposed to tell D C R whether or not we should buy this piece of property. And I think I don't want D C R to buy this property and right now I wish that, Ellie had. Because, uh, they thought about expanding out their watershed district, I wanna say to all you guys down that neck of the woods anyways, but.
Yeah.
I wish they did buy it. Yeah, my property's about four years old. So, um, to have this kind of issues this early. Um, it, it is concerning and I want to, I do wanna thank you though for listening. Um, and, and, um, all of your team has been great, I'm just fine. So I really appreciate that.
Well, about, about, all we've been able to do is listen.
Give you some ideas.
Maybe give you some, some kind of a place to turn, but, uh, but I'll tell you.
How, how can, in a way, you, you're talking about trying to get somebody in to take another look at this place. And what's going on on both places.
It's still, it's, it's on the private lots.
Yeah, I know.
So I'm sorry, you know, I'd love to. So I'm sorry, you know, I'd love to say, y- y- you know, we can.
It is too bad that we could not say, hey, uh, get ahold of such and such a company. Now get your H O A or tell Blair you're gonna pay for it and get somebody in there to have another look. Where this water is coming from, what what's the story on it, you know, behind this whole thing?
So I'm just thinking, he said his property is about four years old, same as ours, maybe it's like a default and stuff they were using. To put in the drainage system.
These houses really behind his house, like you. You know, you have forest and hill, I I don't think someone put pipe in. In the ground that far down for it to reach you, maybe, that's my guess, I, you might just have water that is in the hill. If it is coming out halfway, it it's like a vein, um.
Yeah, cause I know with us, it just, it it recently started, we didn't see it for a while, so it, we started building and everything, that's when ours started.
I mean, Tom, I can I can see that you've got water halfway up because uh grass and and green doesn't grow where there's no water. I mean, that's obvious.
I um, I was gonna pick, uh, pick up some blankets, some erosion control blankets and start working in myself. And uh planting some, trying to plant some stuff. Um, but I first thought I would reach out.
Slopes too steep.
It's gonna be a challenge and it's gonna be very expensive and um. My struggle is which way do I go, but I need to learn for me how they installed the drainage in the hill. So I can figure out.
You gotta know where that's going, because if it's on the other side of the driveway going down, then this this is just natural water. If the drainage is on this side and it's got perforated and it's broken, you're fighting a losing battle. That's my opinion.
Oh, and and you're a hundred percent correct and that's what's going through my head, if I just can see through the hill. Or if I can just have X-ray vision and see in the.
Like I said, I I'd start with Harold and see if he's got anything on drawings that was laid out. And then I I know this doesn't sound like a a good solution, but I would. Ask Cle if you've got asbilled drawings of the house and the drainage system with the driveway. Doesn't hurt to keep asking and asking.
Yeah, he he wasn't, he didn't, he said they didn't real, they don't have asbills. And he was guessing about the four inch and he thinks it's a four inch. And um, I don't know, I was hoping me, I said, hey, maybe you may have something on a bottleneck, napkin or something that you can show me.
So I guess, why don't we have stronger, like, isn't it up to the planning board, if you guys are doing the the plot plans and the. The developments, right, why don't we have stronger restrictions on what is required? Like that they they do asbills or they do, like, this has been a recurring problem for over thirty years.
We can't asbill private property, we don't have the authority to do that. We can only asbill roads, that's our purview. And and right aways, that's it, that's our purview. If it gets into the housing private, that's what Kevin had said last week, or I'm sorry, two meetings ago, it's not the planning board's purview.
I think I think she's, this question is about the site plan approval, you know, she's wondering maybe. Why, why wasn't site plan approval for the lots? Conducted for subdivisions a lot earlier.
Never had any. Honestly, we didn't know about it, there was, there was no site plan. Cause if I'm not mistaken, subdivisions, you guys tell me if I'm wrong, we just lay out the lot count.
Yeah, and.
But but that's my suggestion is maybe you need to be doing more to help protect people.
That's what we're talking about doing.
Talking about.
Yeah, with that.
She's she's asking why wasn't it done earlier, because she's saying that this was happening for thirty years.
Hasn't been happening for thirty years. Come on.
No, no, this is the the there's a point, there's a point there.
I there have, I I've been in town for a long time and this this isn't the first or second or third time I've heard this. It's been ongoing for in several parts of town.
Let let me just kinda put it this way, and I, not in the way of an excuse. Okay, but I have been on the planning board for over thirty years, we have been through between part time and full time. Five, six, seven. Who are trained professionals, okay? None of one of them has ever proposed. That we do a site plan review like we are now looking at, no one. Okay, uh, and you know, I I just. A few months ago, I just happened to ask our town engineer a question. You know, are are there, are there some places that maybe do have a preapproval site plan review? You know, for an entire project, and he said, yeah. That's the first time in over thirty years. That that has even been mentioned by anybody. With probably twenty five different planning board members, like I say, who knows how many professional planners? I don't know why, but it just never did.
So the answer is we're going to look.
Problems are. A lot more now and that's.
Well, that that's probably a part of it, you know, it's.
Finding that we we need it because.
Because the good flat land is all scooped.
It's all gone.
Good land for development.
All that's left now is just the steep hills around here. Instead of having cattle running on them and horses having fun on them. Now you got waterfalls.
So this site plan, um, we need to look into it, cause I mean. We're talking about subdivisions, I don't know if it's effective on A and Rs or not, I don't know, I gotta look at, look at.
At least Worcester's, it's any lot.
Any lot, well, that's good, that'll help, that'll protect people by buying single lots, so.
But, like I say, I, we don't know the details of it at this point. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, sorry, we're.
I said that about two hours ago, but that's all right.
Thank you for listening, you guys have a great time here, I really appreciate it.